Call ourselves to order. Beautiful May morning. First item of business is new councilor business, Councilor Rogers.
Yeah. I was, last week I met with MP Zimmer and a few other people. And it was regarding the Canada 150 Community Infrastructure Program. As Canada is celebrating their 150th year in Confederation in 2017, they have some infrastructure programs that will support projects that that'll rehabilitate existing community facilities across Canada and ensuring a lasting legacy resulting from the Canada 150 program. There's $210 million in, that they've, that they have for that. It's 50/50 funding up to $250,000. The Canada 150 Fund, it was launched on April the 23rd, 2015. And the applications, they have to be in fairly quick. So the people that can apply would be regional government and provincial territorial statute, public sector body that is wholly owned by an eligible recipient, and a nonprofit entity. The projects that I kind of got a little bit excited about was, some examples would be community centers, including legions, cultural centers and museums, parks, recreational trails such as fitness trails, bike paths and other types of trails, libraries, recreational facilities including local arenas, gymnasiums, swimming pools, sports field, tennis and basketball and volleyball and other sports specific courts or other recreation facilities. Tourism facilities fall into it. And there, there's, certain fairs and festivals can be applied for, for this as well. So Wednesday, June 17th is the last day to apply for this. I do believe that most of the things that I listed off, we could find one or two things for that. We're allowed up to, I believe it was, it's 50/50 funding up to $250,000. And it doesn't have to be one project. And it's the same as everything else. You know, shovels have to be not in the ground before it's applied for. So I believe that we have some projects that we haven't started yet. And then, on a side note to all of that, when I was talking to MP Zimmer, he said there's also an accessibility fund that is hardly ever used. So this accessibility fund is for access to buildings. I know that, that around the arenas, we are going to be doing some, some dirt work around the arenas and that's, that's considered access to the buildings because you've got those fire emergencies. So that's, that could be applied for a part of that. And also, he did mention that paving might be. And I know that we're doing some paving out at the Encana Event Center this year. So I don't know if that might apply. But there's more information here anyway. So I'll just give that to, to staff, I guess, and, and let them have a look at it. But so, there's a lot of money that's out there and I think that we should be applying for.
Thanks so much. Thank you for attending that session. Any questions?
I was just going to say, I think, you know, we absolutely, you know, I'm just thinking about, when you read that, there's four or five different K-PAC, art gallery, the exhibition grounds, rotary trail, the trail that's being expanded and worked on. So there's a number of projects probably that may be extremely beneficial for us if we could explore them a bit to see if, or some, the criteria might work for us. I wouldn't mind.
I was also thinking that we have the classroom for the, in the museum that's coming up on this agenda. So there could be application made to that as well.
What's your pleasure?
Do we need a motion then to set direction for staff to investigate any projects that would fit that criteria? All right, I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you. Seconded, Councilor Schuman, discussion?
In the motion, sorry.
So we're going to move that we ask administration to have a review of it and see if there's any projects potentially that might fit the criteria that we could consider.
Okay, thank you.
And Jim, would that be through our, would have to be through our capital budget and a matching program for this year?
It would be, Your Worship, but I doubt if this year's a viable option for you because, to begin with, you have to make the application. You can't put a shovel in the ground. You can't put a shovel in the ground until you're approved. So you funded your capital program for this year. If you apply in that grant, it means that you're holding it off until whenever the announcements are. There may be many things that qualify for next year, but that's a very short timeline. I don't have a grant writer right now. There's very little chance I'll have anything together for you by that June 15th deadline. Very little chance.
Counselor Rogers?
Well, there's definitely that museum classroom that's coming up on the agenda.
The council hasn't put one dime towards that, Your Worship. It's a 50/50 program. You would already have had to commit your 50%.
Yep. Go ahead.
Part of this was if something was already, like a walking trail, for instance. If that walking trail was already started on and there was a portion of it that needed to be finished that was, that was coming up, that there, that could be applied for as well. The, like, I don't believe that, you know, we should just apply for something and make something up so that we can get a grant. I do realize that we have some things that are coming up in the next couple of years that we could be looking at, at doing that for.
So, but I think we have to have this for next year, doesn't it?
As long as it's done by 2017.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let's, let's pursue it a bit with administration and see if there's something that may flow from it. Okay?
Yep.
That work? Any further questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Thank you for that. Further councilor business. Counselor Wilbur?
So, I got to spend the last three days with the people from the Banff Institute and some really great people from our community in our leadership program. And I'm really excited to see what rolls out over the next month, next two months, and the next six months. So, some very inspired people, some very excited people, and I really look forward to see what's coming out of that. So it's going to be exciting. So you will see 25, 30 people out in the community asking questions and engaging our community. And so don't be surprised, they're coming, they're going to ask questions and please, please help them and answer the questions that they ask. But it's going to be very interesting and what a wonderful group of people to work with, just even the people from the Banff Institute. It was a very, very comfortable and very uncomfortable process because they really do take you out of your comfort zone. But it's, I'm really excited to see what's coming forward.
Thank you.
So I think, I'm glad we did it. It's going to be exciting. The other thing I have is, because I know Counselor Jevetkov had asked me what the Moose Hide Campaign was, so I brought you a little piece of moose hide. But the Moose Hide Campaign is actually a campaign by Aboriginal and non-Aboriginal men who are battling and standing up for, to be against violence against women and children. And so this campaign is that, I believe they're on their second Moose Hide now, so it's really growing. So they give out a piece of moose hide in hopes that you will wear it and be forward and open about violence against women and children. So if anyone wants any more information, they can go to moosehidecampaign.ca. And I do believe we'll see this coming to our community through the Nowakian Friendship Centre and Aboriginal families. So I only got one, but Counselor Jevetkov, this is your piece of moose hide. So there you go. And I hope you wear it with pride. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for attending that. I'm registering on behalf of council to the Banff Learning Centre Leadership Program. I really, having heard some feedback early already, it's amazing that people are engaging in the community in that level to try to build the capacity of our community even more. So thank you for that.
Not a problem, I enjoyed it.
Thank you. More new councilor business. Counselor Jevetkov?
I'd just like to mention the South East Motorsports Association Race Meet on the weekend. They had 190 racers. 95% of them are from out of town. I went down there a few times and it was packed with campers and lots of interest. And it was, you know, a relatively small group of volunteers. It's amazing what they can do, you know, when they commit themselves and their, their resources. So I'd like to compliment that group. Just another example of volunteers in our community that are giving our young people an opportunity for this type of activity, and it's really positive. I was just looking back on the photos downstairs there. I can remember that this organization got established when Blair was mayor. So that was 1999. And they've evolved into quite a going concern in, in the motocross circuit.
Thank you. Thanks for attending. Further councilor business? Thank you. Item three, minutes. We have our minutes of our regular meeting of council of May 11th for adoption and our special meeting of council for adoption. Counselor McFadden, seconded. Counselor Wilbur. Any errors or omissions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Any business arising out of the minutes? Correspondence? None? We're ahead of our delegation time, so we'll move to item seven, reports, 7-1. We have report number 15095 from the Chief Financial Officer. Counselor Schuman?
I move report number 15-095 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding our 2014 carbon offset purchase agreement with offsetters be approved as presented. Further, that staff direct offsetters to retire 3,490, I don't know what that is, TCO2E. What does that mean, Charlie?
Tons of carbon emission.
Tons of carbon emissions. Okay, we're going to, we're going to offset or retire 3,490 tons of carbon offsets for $20 a ton from their general portfolio. Further, that the 2014 Carbon Neutral Progress Survey be completed and posted on the city's website in accordance with the provincial regulations before June 2nd, 2015, allowing the city to maintain its carbon neutral status for 2014.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor McFadden, discussion? Counselor Jevetkov?
I'll be voting against the motion. I, I still think that, you know, we're talking about $70,000 or $80,000 here. I think it would go a long ways to establishing, for example, a filling station for compressed natural gas in the city yards or someplace in town. I still think that we should be looking at some direct action. To me, buying carbon offsets is, I guess it's a way to meet the requirements, but it's not a direct action type of an approach. So I just don't agree with doing it this way.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Rogers?
I, every time I see this, I say to myself, you know, why are we buying this from somebody else? Why is it we can't develop something in Dawson Creek and take other communities' money to invest in our carbon offsets? But I look at it and I go, this is, looked like it was the best opportunity for what we're going to have to do to remain carbon neutral, so we'll see.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mayor, this is Charlie here.
Yes?
Just a procedure here, having some problems listening to a couple of speakers, so they thought to speak into their microphones, that would be helpful. Just have a question to ask here. And I don't think it's applicable for this business right now, but would, would liquefied filling station as a future project be at all eligible for this carbon offset business?
Jim?
Through Your Worship, at the moment, not. At the moment, municipalities can do organic waste diversion through curbside recycling or gas capture at landfills. Those are the only two that are currently certified to qualify as offset purchases. But that work is ongoing. New things are being brought on or proposed every year.
Thank you. Did you hear?
Further to that, thanks, Pat. Maybe we should, after this matter is disposed of, it's on the table right now, could we not, is a means of petitioning that such a project be allowed for municipalities?
At considerable expense, Your Worship. That would require, the certification and accreditation process is involved. It requires multiple engineering reports, that kind of thing. The regional district's gone through that process for a gas capture project at the landfill. And as you will know as a director, it's three years in now and they're looking at potentially getting certification next year. And it's one of the ones that's already in the pre-identified criteria.
Thank you. Thank you. Further questions? Further comments? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Item 7-2, we have a report number 15083 from the City Planner regarding the development permit 1509. Counselor Wilbur?
I'll make the motion that report number 15-083, is that the one we're on? Senior City Planner Development Permit 15-09 in regards to 10,008 and 10,012, 17th Street be received. Further, that staff be directed to issue the development permit 15-09, which reduces the minimum frontage for multiple family dwellings from 7.5 meters to 1.2 meters per ground-oriented dwelling unit and permits development of a 10-unit multi-family building. And further, that issuance of the permit be subject to the applicant consolidating the two properties and receipt of the required financial security of $50,000.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Schuman? Counselor Schuman? Sorry, Charlie. All those, sorry, questions? All ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. 7-3, we have report number 15087 regarding development permit 1511 for the Dawson Creek Society for Community Living.
I have to claim a conflict of interest.
All right.
And so does Charlie. Close your ears, Charlie.
So you're going to have to go on mute or I don't know how you do that, Charlie. Thank you.
We'll mute you on this end.
We'll mute, we'll mute you here. Report number 15073, sorry, 15087. Counselor Schuman?
I move that report number 15087 from the Senior City Planner, redevelopment permit 1511 at 1334 102nd Avenue be received. Further, that the variance to the maximum height of accessory buildings from not exceeding the height of the principal building to 5.3 meters. And the development of an accessory shop building on Lot 4, Block 1, Section 15, TWP 78, Range 15, west of the 6th Meridian, PRD Plan 2958, good lord, be approved in principle. Further, that the staff be directed to proceed with the required 10-day notification period.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Rogers, discussion? Counselor Schuman?
So if they, I was looking at the picture and I know that they're planning this building, like where that parking lot is. I'm wondering where everybody's going to park if they, if they fill up that whole back area with the building. Do they have to have a certain amount of parking or are they just going to all be out on the street then?
Yes, they do have a certain, have to have a certain amount of parking, but I'll turn it over to Nigel to explain how it works with the new building.
They will meet their minimum parking requirements. The plans that were attached to the permit weren't that clear, but there would be about room for 2, 4, 6, 8 or 10, so parking spots between the existing building and the proposed one. And they will pay that parking as a condition of the permit as well.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, they wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to grant the permit unless we granted the variance to it for the parking if it exceeded the availability for parking. So thank you for that, Nigel. Any further questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Turn Charlie back on and bring Shelly back in.
Charlie got back in the ring, pardon me.
Yeah. Item 7.4, we have report number 15093 from the Senior Planner regarding development permit 1510. Counselor McFadden?
I'll make the motion that report 15093 from the Senior City Planner regarding development permit 1510 at 42 Rosella Bork Road legally described as Lot 35, 7th Township, 78th Range, 14 west of the 6th Meridian, PRD Plan Number EPP 22593 be received. Further, that the development permit for the proposed parking lot and related structure be authorized in principle and issued upon successful completion of the required 10-day notification period and the receipt of the required $11,125 financial security.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Rogers, discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. 7-5, we have report number 15084 from the Senior Planner regarding a sidewalk encroachment. Counselor Wilbur?
I'll make the motion that report number 15-084 from the Senior City Planner, request for sidewalk encroachment at 100401 on 10th Street be received. Further, that staff be authorized to proceed with a sidewalk encroachment agreement for the Kiwanis Arts Center Society at an annual usage fee of $250 for use from May 1st to October 15, 2015, with a renewal option for 2016.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Schuman, discussion? Counselor Wilbur?
I just want to say that actually the barber shop downtown had, had done haircuts outside. And through the leadership program, everyone was just like, that is so awesome. If we could just get stuff outside and more people would come downtown. So I'm really excited about this.
Counselor Rogers?
I just had one question. I, I see that there's a $250 annual fee covering the cost. Like, is the 250 bucks covering the staff time and expenses? I was just curious to make sure that, that staff time and administration time is being covered in the 250 bucks.
Thank you. Jim?
I seriously doubt that, Your Worship. But I couldn't tell you what that time is going to be. It's going to be several hours for Brenda and maybe an hour for me, this council meeting. It'll all add up to more than $250. That's normally not how you've looked at these things, though. The sort of part of the work we do. Nigel's had to look at it. And all this is going to happen again for the barber who's kind of jumped out ahead of approvals. Although he has talked to us. You know, this is sort of, this business comes through the door and we don't actually track every hour spent on every application.
Thank you. Counselor Wilbur?
I think one way for us to look at it, though, is this is an enhancement to downtown, which we've really been fighting to, you know, how do we enhance downtown? How do we bring people down to those businesses? And I just think this is another opportunity to do that.
Yeah. Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you.
Did you vote against?
No. Report number 15091 from the Deputy Director of Corporate Administration regarding quotes for lot cutting. Counselor Jevetkov?
That report number 15091 from the Deputy Director of Corporate Administration, re-RFQ 2015-19, lot cutting be received. Further, that staff be authorized to enter an agreement for lot cutting services with homeless surveys commencing June 1st, 2015, for a three-year term at a cost of $120 per lot.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Wilbur, discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. 15088 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding roofing tender award. Counselor Rogers?
That report number 15-088 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding Roofing Tender Award 2015-14, 2015-12, and 2015-13 be received. Further, that the roofing tenders be awarded as follows. Do you want me to read the rest of that? 2015 to 14 is the airport. That's DM Henderson Roofing for $105,923. 2015-12, Fire Hall, DM Henderson Roofing for $171,291. 2015-13, WTP House, Hagie Construction, $93,500.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor McFadden, discussion? Counselor McFadden?
WTP House, meaning water treatment plant, is that right?
Yes, through Your Worship, there is a, what was formerly a residence on the grounds of the water treatment plant. And it's been converted to offices and this work is actually part of that conversion.
Right. Thank you.
Further questions? Further comments? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. 7-8, we have report number 15090 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding our vending machine, RFP. Counselor Wilbur?
I have it up, so I'll make the recommendation that report number 15-090 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding the vending machine, RFP 2015-06, be received. Further, that the supply, installation, stocking and maintenance of vending machines at Kenbork, Aquatic Center, Memorial Arena, Ken Arena and Airport will be awarded to Skeena Distribution Services. Further, that the contract be awarded for a three-year term commencing June 1st, 2015 and ending May 31st, 2018, with the city receiving 11% commission on gross sales.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor McFadden, discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. 7-9, we have report number 15089 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding our janitorial supplies tender award. Counselor Schuman? Counselor Parslow?
Thank you. Thank you. I move that report number 15-089 from the Deputy Director of Community Services, re-Janitorial Supplies Tender Award 2015-09 be received. Further, that the supply of janitorial chemical products be awarded to Northern Janitorial Supply and the supply of janitorial paper products be awarded to Rice Food Services Limited for a three-year term commencing June 1st, 2015 and ending May 31st, 2018.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Rogers, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. 7-10, we have report number 15085 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding an art gallery classroom. Counselor Rogers?
The report number 15-085 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding the art gallery classroom be received. Further, that staff be directed to provide a budget for the construction of the classroom at the NAR Park as part of the 2016 capital plan.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor McFadden, discussion? Counselor Schuman?
When did? I'm just curious when we decided that we were thinking of building the classroom. For some reason, I thought it was something the art society wanted to do. But, I mean...
Jim?
Through Your Worship, in your capital budget discussion this year, the, when you were discussing the re-roofing, or the reciding of the art gallery, Counselor Parslow moved and you adopted a motion saying we would also investigate the possibility of converting that space to a classroom. As it happens, speaking to our consultant engineer, force engineering, they told us that that was going to be a significant separate piece of work and that it would be unlikely to, it would have required a sub-trade, basically, that whoever was doing the siding would probably not bring the crews... not bring the crews or expertise necessary to do such a conversion. And so, our recommendation to you is that we build you a separate budget for that for next year.
Couldn't do it within the contract that we had approved for our capital budget for this year as part of that tender process.
I know. I just thought that we were going to look into it to see if it was feasible for them to do the classroom in the art gallery, not us.
Yeah. And they can't do it. So, now we're going to put it into our 2016 budget.
Where you will or won't approve it. This isn't an approval. This is to get the work done to find out what it will cost.
Yeah.
Further questions? All those in favor? Sorry, Counselor Rogers?
This is what I was talking about by the Canada 150 thing. I know that we haven't approved it or anything like that, but the art gallery, being this nonprofit society, I believe that they are, and through the city, if we applied for that and after the feasibility study came through and it was, if it was okay to go ahead with that and if council did adopt wanting to build this particular classroom and we had our application in for the 150, Canada 150 Plan, then those funds could be diverted to that. But if we did not go ahead with that project, then it wouldn't really matter.
No.
I'm just thinking ahead. I just don't know. I don't know what council's desire would be to actually build this classroom or what the art gallery would want to do for them to build this classroom. So, it's kind of a, a little bit of a conundrum on which way we would want to go with this. Do we, I would just like to ask the administration, you know, would it be prudent to apply for something like this even though we haven't decided whether we'd be going ahead with the project or not?
Jim?
So, we've preliminary looked over the 150 fund processes and they seem to be mirror the other government granting processes, which is to say, you need engineered drawings, you need a commitment of council for your portion of the thing. You can't apply on spec, basically. You have to put this information together. We've already been told by the engineering company, this is a significant piece of work. Preliminary estimate, maybe $250,000 for 400 square feet because of the necessity to run water and sewer under the concrete pad. So, but that all has to be engineered. There's simply no way I can start something now and have the necessary documentation to apply by June 15th. All I could try to do is retrofit something we've already got on the books and you've already okay by June 15th. Don't know who I've got to task to do that. I will look at it and try to task somebody to do that. But the consequence will be, whatever that is, you can't proceed until this government process has worked itself out.
Sure.
So, if that's not till next year, then whatever project we apply for, it won't happen until next year.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment, if I may.
Yep. Go ahead.
You know, it comes to Schuman and correct this inquiry about cost from the art society. And obviously, scope of this work is very significant, is beyond their capacity. And I can't, I cannot support, and appreciate the support from the staff and consideration here, but I will be voting against this because as I look at the cost, potential cost, it is, and that was going to be not something that the city would fund, but it would be the art society. And I look at fiscal gap considerations and other capital needs, I can't, I can't support even looking at the table for 2015. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Rogers? Counselor Jevetkov?
Yeah, I just did a little bit of quick math here. It's like, to do this classroom, it's like $625 a square foot. And you know how much it costs to build your house, your worship.
$650 a square foot. Counselor Jevetkov?
I'm glad Charlie brought that up because I've been kind of wondering about it myself and I was thinking, well, I guess just doing a budget is no big deal. But, you know, we're, as a council, we're quick to layer on work to administration. And then, we're also quick to complain when our priorities don't come forward quick enough. So, this is an issue, I think, that we can, I guess, put aside. So, I will be voting against it as well.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Wilbur?
I concur with actually Counselor Jevetkov and Counselor Parslow is that we did delay some projects so that we could get the ice and stuff and working in our memorial and our curling rink. So, we do have things that are on the table already that we've already delayed to take care of, other things that became the priority. So, I will be voting against it. And, you know, I do think the group has the ability to source out some funding for themselves to do that project.
Thank you. Great point, right? In terms of, if we're going to spend that kind of dough on a, on a part of a facility, I think this is just way out of reach in terms of, and so, why put administration through that work at this point when it's completely out of scope? So, thank you. Any further conversation? Any further questions? All those in favor? Opposed?
I'm opposed.
It's defeated. Thank you. So, we're going to move back now into delegations. We're just a few minutes behind. And our first delegation is Marilyn Belak, board member from the Social Planning and Research Council of British Columbia, in attendance regarding Access Awareness Day proclamation. Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. I have, I have members of the community with me and I just want to confirm.
What's your name? How are you?
I'll get over here. I'm cutting in.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Hi, staff. Good morning. Nice to see you. All your hard work.
How are you, David?
Pretty good. We have more people, yes?
Come in.
Good morning. Good morning, good morning. So, I'll read the proclamation and then I'll turn the floor over to you guys. Whereas accessibility and inclusion is essential for ensuring that all community members have equity and opportunities and the ability to fully participate in community life. And whereas accessibility affects all aspects of community life, physical, social, and economic, including employment, transportation, recreation, housing, and other opportunities. And whereas we all have a role to play in ensuring that our communities are accessible and inclusive as possible. And whereas citizens of Dawson Creek recognize the importance of ensuring that people with disabilities have equitable access to the opportunities that are important to them and live in an access community. Now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim Saturday, June 6, 2015, as a day for individual and group action to promote positive ways of building accessibility together to create accessible and inclusive communities for all our citizens known as Access Awareness Day in Dawson Creek. There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thanks. Dave?
Good to have you here.
Congratulations.
So, I'll get everyone to introduce themselves. I am Marilyn Belak, a past counselor, happy to be in the chambers here again. And I have for three years been on the Spark BC, Social Planning and Research Council of BC Governing Board. And we're well acquainted with them here at the city. They were the people that came in and helped us develop our social plan around which our official community plan is built. So, we've always had a kind of strong bond with Spark BC and we've used them on several occasions, even with our planning of the new subdivisions. Social Planning and Research Council of BC is about 40 years old and is a networking agency that speaks at a very high level to government and to the other major non-for-profit charities and social planning agencies. As government money and social funding has dried up and the economy had a worsening trend a few years ago, this coalition of social agencies has been really important in keeping the dialogue going with the BC government and the federal government. We also at Spark BC hold a great database that we've procured from the federal government and from industry on the social profiles of Canada and our province. So, we're able to share that with independent associations. So, we've become a very strong research and development and spokesperson for nonprofits that deal in any of the areas of social inclusion. I want to, this is a wonderful book we published this year that was on an initiative where we went out to the communities and asked them what social inclusion meant to them or what inclusion the community meant to them. And we were quite surprised, we gave them cameras, that same old thing, and we were quite surprised to see that it was everything from physical accessibility to just being welcome in, in the community so that anything from arts to playgrounds to deaf people being able to attend a concert, so the whole gamut, to which I can talk because I have these lovely little deals in my ears that really helped me in council to fund accessibility. So, it's a wide range. I think the city maybe got this book in the mail from us. If they did, I will give it to our partners in the community, but I'll pass it around. So, we celebrate for 40 years now Access Awareness Day in BC. And the reason that we, Dawson Creek has always done it, but we didn't have the connection between Spark physically written down. So, we think it's really important that we keep Spark and the city, the community, joined together on this because there is some funding that can come through to nonprofits and to the city through the LEARN programs, which are small workshops that can be given and are funded through Spark BC, apply every April for them. So, I was talking with Melanie from your staff about our Measuring Up the North is done, but we could now do a audit of where we are with that and where we should go forward. So, we will keep our communication line open so that the community and the city can maybe access some of those reps and bring our programs forward. I would like, I asked David to join me because he's a self-advocate in the community. And if you people would please introduce yourselves.
I'm Ashley Cannon and I'm with the Dawson Creek Society for Community Living. And this is Katie Marshall.
Katie Marshall? Hi.
My name's Kirsten Homie. I'm also with the Dawson Creek Society for Community Living.
Would you like to say something?
Sure. Well, for the last five years, this will be our fifth Access Awareness Barbecue. So, this is our poster and we have it down at NAR Park. And it's just a good chance that we'll get together and just have a day to talk about accessibility. We talk about accessibility kind of day in, day out where, with what we do, but it's nice to have one day where we can bring community together and have a day to address it and then also, you know, celebrate diversity and celebrate with community.
And our byline this year that we've chosen to go around is accessibility is working. Do you think accessibility is working in Dawson Creek? And do you see?
I think it's been working for some time in Dawson Creek here, but like anything, there's always room for improvement as times change and technology changes, needs change. And I think that the city addresses that and works with.
So do I. Yeah. Can you like to say, David?
No.
Kirsten? Nothing? Nothing, David?
No. Now, I don't know. We're waiting to get the mayor alone.
Wait till he gets us on the phone.
I've been approached, the mayor, about forming an accessibility committee, but nothing has happened with that yet. So, I'll be talking with the mayor. Formed accessibility committee that the mayor says that we can get some city council and business people involved on this community and other sub-advocates. So, hopefully, the accessibility committee will get started soon by the city and businesses and sub-advocates. And then, hopefully, the mayor will jump on board with it. Thank you for that.
There's the improvement. There's the improvement.
Yeah.
We knew he had it, you know.
They have these accessibility committees other places in BC and they have never had one in Dawson Creek, from what I'm told. So, I want to get this one started as soon as possible. But before the mayor and I are going to do that, we are going to do a presentation in front of the chamber to get, to talk about accessibility and accessibility, have to get the whole business accessible for disability people, get, talk about doors opening, businesses to open doors for employment more, and to talk about how we can form a accessibility committee. So, the mayor has to get his secretary to set up a next appointment with the Chamber of Commerce for me, too. So, I'm hoping that one can take place soon, too. So, I'm putting everybody in spot, including the mayor.
I would like to mention one other thing that Spark has gone around known for and that occurs in this community, and that's the parking permit program for disabilities. So, the ones you see marked, the blue parking things and the cards, you get those through your doctor's office, through Spark BC. But the other thing is, Spark, if you go online to sparkbc.ca, there's also a feedback tool that's been very, very successful. And you can even get little cards so that when you see one of those cars parked in the disability zone that shouldn't be, you have a feedback mechanism. And they actually phone in to Spark BC, the businesses, people, the policing forces are phoning in to report those things. And then, we can up, we can tell several things if we need more parking spaces or simply need to do more communication. And also, any problems you find, especially in the wintertime when it's hard to keep those disability parking spaces open, because we do have a conversation with the city and the provincial government and highways department about cleaning those up. So, thank you very much and, of course...
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor McFadden?
Just a comment. I think I flipped some hamburgers down there on, last year, and there was a tremendous amount of tourists at the park at that same time. And when they asked what was happening, I explained it to them and they were just totally impressed that a community would do this sort of thing to reach out to, for access awareness. So, it was very well received by all the tourists that I spoke to about.
The other thing is, I biked to work today. It is bike to work day. And I was very pleased to see, I was thinking, it's probably Jim Shute's bike because I used to see him, I was coming to work. But those lovely red bike things you have was all used up. So, I came up the elevator and parked my bike, just to be who I am. I'm glad to see that City Hall has all their bike spaces used up this morning and go Dawson Creek. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's July 11th. It's Barbie Day was changed to July 11th.
Okay.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Katie. I'm glad you're here.
So, our next, sorry? Anna Abey?
She left.
So, our next, oh, there's Marilyn's stuff.
Oh, sorry. I was going to be, I'm a truce.
Nice try. Thank you, Marilyn. Our next delegation is Anna Abey from the Aboriginal Family Service Now a Conference Centre, in attendance regarding National Aboriginal Day proclamation. And it's the day the mayor gets to wear his sash at council. So, good morning. How are you? Good to see you. Thank you for coming this morning. Whereas the Constitution of Canada recognizes the existing rights of the Aboriginal people of Canada. And whereas in the Constitution of Canada, Aboriginal peoples of Canada include the Indian, Inuit, and Métis people of Canada. And whereas the Aboriginal people of Canada made and continue to make valuable contributions to Canadian society, and it is considered appropriate that there be in each year a day to mark and celebrate these contributions and to recognize the different cultures of the Aboriginal peoples of Canada. And whereas many Aboriginal people celebrate the summer solstice, which has an important symbolism within their cultures. And whereas the Governor General of Canada is proclaiming June 21st of each year as National Aboriginal Day. Now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim June 21st, 2015, as National Aboriginal Day in Dawson Creek. There you go. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, this year, we are teaming up with a friendship centre to make it bigger and better. We rented this Calvin Kirk Centre, but we're having it on June 20th and everyone's invited. It's going to be a barbecue and we're bringing in...
How are you?
Very well.
Morning.
This is Blair.
Blair, I'm PL. You get a hug from the mayor whenever you come to a proclamation date.
Hello.
Or any day.
Or any day.
Or any day, exactly.
You come in front of the mayor, you're getting a hug. Whereas the tourism industry within Dawson Creek is a major contributor to our local economy, and whereas it is deemed desirable to designate be a tourist in your own town month to raise awareness of the unparalleled and uncommon attractions within Dawson Creek, thus encouraging residents to visit and become more aware of the value of tourism resources. And whereas the enlightened awareness will lead to a better understanding of the value of tourism within our community, now therefore, I do hereby proclaim the month of June 2015 as be a tourist in your own town month in Dawson Creek.
Yay! It's official.
It's official. Let the bells ring out, the bandens fly.
So, yeah, June's always an exciting month, because usually maybe we get a snowstorm, so people halt their trips and go, what has been different this year, which is great. But June, you know, it's our month that we try to celebrate, make sure that B.C.ers know that your own backyard is a great place to promote. There may be things you've never experienced, but also tell all the travelers, you walk the creek, have you gone fishing at this great lake, and so we want to be our own advocates for our local tourism economy. The other reason we're here today is we're having Councilor and Councillor Day in June as well, so it's our official invite to council the coming attendance, and of course, staff here are always welcome to come as well. And that Blair Wade is our new employee. My last day's Friday, so Blair's going to try to keep everything flowing while I'm stepping away, so, yeah, it's a busy week, but we're excited to get June here and start the great month, so.
Good.
We brought you all a great little bag that our local schools have colored, and this one's actually George Mercer Dawson. And what grade was it, George?
I think this is a grade five or four or five student that did this, and I, we had a general consensus that this has been our favorite bag that we got. We put out over a thousand of these bags into our school system this year, so they'll be coming back, and we'll be stuffing them with things like our visitor guide and some promotional pieces for our community to encourage visitors and locals alike to get out and explore all the great things that Dawson Creek has to offer. So these bags are being decorated from students, local students from kindergarten right up to the high school level. This year we reached out to our Hutterite colonies, we've got our reconnect system is also doing some of the bags, private schools and public schools, so we're really excited about that. This particular bag has been the favorite here, and I would like to present this one in particular to our mayor. It's just such a great bag.
Oh, thank you.
Hey, everybody, I'm George Dawson.
I'm George George Dawson.
That's most great.
Thank you.
And just one other thing I want to talk about is, we put together a calendar for be a tourist in your own month, so this is a June calendar, and it lists all the events that are happening in this month, and we'll be printing out and distributing these absolutely everywhere we can. We'll be putting them on Facebook, just to really let people know that there are lots of wonderful things to do in this community, not just in June, but all year round. So if you know anybody that could use this calendar, send them down to the visitor's centre, and for goodness sakes, if you have people yourself coming to visit, trot them down to the visitor's centre, and we'll set you up with everything you need to do that you need to have to be a tour guide, as, you know, for your company, so. I'm just saying, this is a really great little calendar. Thank you. So we want to present everybody on council and the administration with a day. Thank you very much.
So just...
Blair has one every year.
Yeah, but, you know, I, with my bags, I frame them. I have a whole collection, and I frame them. They're beautiful.
I've got a couple, too, that I have.
Oh, Paul, you get the N.A.R. board.
Right on, thank you. So before we conclude with this delegation, we have, obviously, Sam leading us at the end of the week, we wanted to let you know how much sincerely we've appreciated the passion that you brought to our community through tourism, your efforts towards our community, and a whole host of ways that you've contributed. You're going to be a missed resource and important person in our community, so from there, we've got a small gift.
Some swag?
Some swag. We want to present to you and say thank you, and wish you all the best, and we're so sorry to see you go, but we also wish you all the best, whatever your future holds. So thank you for giving your time of your life to Dawson Creek, and we want to wish you the best.
Thank you for everything. Sure. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, our next delegation, Mr. Wayne Plonner and Stefan Pavlos from the South Creees Community Resources Society in regards, are in attendance regarding the Northern Navigator project they've been working on. Good morning, gentlemen. Welcome.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. So we were here in November, in which, at which time we presented to the council of that day the idea of the Northern Navigator, and received a rather, a very supportive letter, which actually we've used to much advantage, so we thank you very much for that. Today, we're asking if our Northern Navigator project can have an office here in City Hall, and it's also to update you on the project, so it's those two things that we're really about. So a quick review for Mr. Gavakov and Mr. Rogers, who weren't involved last time, and then I'll try to explain a bit about why this initiative is good for the community, good for City Hall, good for our project, and how it fits within the challenges that this council has with its fiscal gap and other financial problems, and finally, want to talk a little bit about details. The Peace River, even more than the rest of B.C., has a challenge with family breakup. The services here are a few, and last year, I can say that there were 110 files started in the provincial court in Dawson Creek and over 300 in Fort St. John. So we're talking over 400 breakups, so that's over 800 parents, and if you add the children in, you're talking an awful lot of our population. At the same time, the Family Law Act tells us that its purpose, and this is a law, by the way, that a former MLA lector had a lot to do with getting through, it has as its purpose the encouragement to settle family matters before court. That's what we're supposed to be doing now, and the idea is court should not be the first option, and in fact, our courts have been referring continuing conflict files to mediation in this area for the last year or so. Sometimes mediation isn't just the first option, it's also the last option. Our initiative is to try to break that cycle and put in an assessor at the beginning of the process. This assessor would be called a navigator, and in broad strokes, people with family disputes will be referred to the navigator. The navigator does an assessment, determines if they're appropriate for mediation, determines how much they should pay on a sliding scale, and then sets the date for their mediation. So what we, this is a big initiative. We have three mediators now, we thought we had four, but we have three mediators lined up, and we have put a lot of the pieces together. Stefan and I have worked together with Mediate B.C. Society and the Family Justice Initiative Lab. We have an application for $50,000 from the Law Foundation. The person who is reviewing that application is, says we're shortlisted, we're on the small group that they're considering, and she said as well that today is her last day to get her report forward, and that if this goes through, this would be a real support. If the idea that a city thought that this was important enough to have in their facility, that would be a huge boost and would really impress the Law Foundation deciders. So our request is, for exactly that, that the home for the navigator and Dawson Creek Mediations be in an office here. The reason we don't want a courthouse is that this isn't a government and it isn't a court project. It is an attempt to have people resolve their problems for mediation and not a court, and to have them negotiate them rather than fight them out. As you saw in my little blurb that I sent you, a recent study says, how do you take a system that tears people apart and turn it into a system that heals? The answer they said is, you can't have losers, right? You can't make, as soon as you have losers, people get passive aggressive, they tear things apart, and it's always the kids who hurt the most. We want a place where children do come first and people work things out instead of fight about them. Some questions. First of all, why should it be in Dawson Creek? The obvious place now for all the professional event in the area seems to be Fort St. John. When I arrived in Dawson Creek 37 years ago, there were more than 20 lawyers who, non-crown lawyers in this area. We're now down to single digits here, right? This was the professional center for the area when I moved here. We were known as the best, some of the best lawyers in the province, and this is an area that generated a lot of judges. That's all changed now. So part of this project for me personally is, I want to start getting at least some kind of the new professional back into this area, and that new professional would include this assessor, the navigator, and a mediator, so that's a personal goal as part of this. It's not a contest. Fort St. John will have its mediators and will be a big part of this, but I'd like the navigator thing to have a home in Dawson Creek, so that we can still be an important professional center. The next thing I wanted to talk about is finances. Dawson Creek, I know that here in Dawson Creek, you have been dealing with this fiscal gap question, and you're taking it extremely seriously, and as a member of the community, it is much appreciated. I understand as well that the province or, and the federal government have lots of ways of raising money, and you don't have very many. You've got property taxes and not much else, so I understand that this is a, it always creates a problem. There would, it could be possible to argue, there's no direct cost if we're taking space that otherwise isn't being used and turned it into this, and we pay for the renovation costs, that there really isn't a cost to the city. I don't think that's a fair way to look at it. I think we should be, actually be held accountable like other organizations and so forth. So I want to try to show how we can look at this financially, to see if it's fiscally acceptable. First, we're recruiting for a navigator. A key prospect that we're looking at is in Vancouver. If she was successful and accepted, she would move here. If we don't do it here, she'll move to Fort St. John. We recruited a mediator, like I trained, I've done a mediation course trying to train mediators. We had somebody who was going to move to Fort St. John to be a mediator. I persuaded her she should come here. She's now delayed that a bit, there's some family issues, but the idea is that we could and very well might have two people buying houses, moving to Dawson Creek instead of going to Fort St. John, right? So to me, that is a bit of an answer. The other thing for us is, because it's a startup, we really can't pay rent at this point. The money that we're looking for from the Law Foundation isn't allowed to be used for things like rent. We will raise the money for renovations and that sort of stuff. I know I said in the blurb, five years, but what I'm thinking is that what makes a lot more sense is to look at a three-year term, and to, if it costs us five to eight grand, I think Mr. Shute thought it would be that kind of a number to renovate. Three years would allow us to get set up, justify those kinds of costs and so forth, and then this council would still be in term. We could come back here if the project's a great success, we can explain where we're at, we can negotiate an appropriate rent and do all that sort of stuff. If it's a failure, you should boot us out, right? And for that matter, if we failed beforehand, the idea isn't that we can just use the space. The space has to be dedicated for our project, and the project goes down, which I think is possible but unlikely, then we should leave. So that's, and that's where we're looking at in terms of money. And let's see if there's anything else in my notes. So, quick summary. This is a major initiative from our point of view, and it's a major initiative for one of the major problems in the Peace River area, which is family transition problems. We're asking if we can't have it centered in Dawson Creek with an office here. We like the idea of City Hall because we see City Hall, unlike the provincial building. Provincial building is where you go for fights, that's what courts do. Here, we want it to be a place that is like a lot of the rest of this, we want it to be the, seen as the place you go to get things worked out, right? I mean, this is where I, I've done a lot of things for working out for the city here, and I know the city works out a lot of things for me here, and I want this to be part of that package. To me, that's what a City Hall can and should be about. I appreciate it's a little bit out of the normal comfort zone, however, it's where the future's going, and I'll, this is, I can say, there's three projects like this going on as far as I know. We're ahead of the curve, we're ahead of the rest. Two of those three, one's in Denver that's at a university, the other one's in Kansas State, it's at a university. We don't have a university to center this, right? I got to go with the best we've got, and this is, this is what I think is the best place we've got to really get, to enhance the reputation, to make it look like the town and our project are both trying to make a huge difference in our community. And I'm open to questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Wilber?
No, I'm still processing.
Oh, okay. Questions? Counselor Gavakov?
Have you looked at other options around the area here?
Yes, we have, and, and there are, there are other options that would be available. The nice thing about this one is it's so close to city, to the courthouse, right? So the accessibility is great. The reason we want this one ahead of some of the other spaces that are empty downtown is truly, then we're just another hole in the wall. Here, I do think both we and the city get a reputation for being problem solvers, like it really boosts us to be here, that, and it boosts our funding chances as well if we're here, so that's why we're here before we actually push those other locations.
Thank you. Further questions? Counselor Schuman?
I don't have any questions. I've talked to you about this, but I really appreciate your passion for this and for bringing it, bringing it to us.
Thank you. Further, Counselor Gavakov?
For renovations, you were talking about raising money, is there any thought about actually doing the renovations?
About us doing them? I have talked to somebody who would be willing to help, yes. I've talked to a builder in town who says he would help, and there's, like, there are people definitely lining up now to help this project, and this is, this is seen as a particularly big need in our community, so, so, and next month is supposed to be fundraising month, so that will be another issue. I'll be talking to all the lawyers here and in Fort St. John, and I, there's other community groups I hope to talk to.
Thank you. Wayne, Counselor Rogers?
I just wonder, what's the actual business plan for it? I, just going through my notes really quick here because I'm playing catch-up.
Yeah.
Your application's shortlisted for 50 grand, but what's it actually going to cost you guys to run this program?
Okay, I, what we're looking, do you want to say, Stefan? Okay, I can say that we're looking, we have a budget of $65,000 a year, we're thinking to start up, $100,000 makes sense. The idea is that in a year and a half or so, at that point, either we will find a regular funder, right, or the sliding scale will be bumped to cover the cost of the project, so that it will be funded. Like, if you think of it in terms of leverage, we're looking at $65,000, but that is supposed to cover perhaps a couple hundred mediations a year, and a mediation is, say, 1,500 bucks of mediation, right, on average. So you're looking at something that should leverage a couple hundred thousand plus worth of mediation kind of work per year in the Peace River.
So the funding model of the users pay for the mediations that are conducted?
That's right.
And that's how you fund the mediator's fees?
Exactly right. So all we want is, we want that assessor, right, so that, because obviously with family stuff, safety is so important with children and so forth, it's crucial to have somebody doing all of that, and we're hoping that that's the piece that the authorities or somebody will fund on an ongoing basis. We want to start it up ourselves, because quite frankly, I don't want them regulating it until we've got it running the way Stefan and I think it needs to run. It's only after that that we want to present it to, say, the Attorney General or to others who might fund it and say, this is how we've done it. And I should also say that we have been in close touch with Dan Van Der Slus, and who's the fellow in the Attorney General who would be involved in the long term, and we've been involved with the Chief Judge for regulations and that kind of stuff, but those are, that's a totally different level of, you know, what happens in a year. That's not about, how do we get it running? Because until it's running and they see it's running well, they're not going to be behind us.
If I may, from my point of view, on the other side of this coming from social services, I see this hopefully affecting the other services that we have internally over at the South Creees Community Resources Society. On the...
plus worth of, of mediation kind of work per year in the Peace River.
So the funding model of the users pay for the mediations that are conducted?
That's right.
And that's how you fund the mediator's fees?
Exactly right. So all we want is we want that assessor, right? So that, because obviously with family stuff, safety is so important with children and so forth, it's crucial to have somebody doing all of that. And we're hoping that that's the piece that the authorities or somebody will fund on an ongoing basis. We wanna start it up ourselves because quite frankly, I don't want them regulating it until we've got it running the way Stephen and I think it needs to run. It's only after that that we want to present it to, say, the Attorney General or to others who might fund it and say, this is how we've done it. And I should also say that we have been in close touch with Dan Van Der Slus and the, who's the fellow in the Attorney General who would be involved in the long term. And we've been involved with the Chief Judge for, for regulations and that kind of stuff. But those are, that's a totally different level of, you know, what happens in a year. That's not about how do we get it running? Because until it's running and they see it's running well, they're not going to be behind us.
If I may, from my point of view, on the other side of this coming from social services, I see this hopefully affecting the other services that we have internally over at the South Creek Community Resources Society. On the safety aspect, we have a lot of children that are coming through our children who witness abuse programs. We have a lot of women going through our counseling programs and we have a lot of families going through our family counseling programs. They are essential services, but at the same time, you can almost see them as being abandoned. And I think one of the major issues that we are dealing with there is family conflict. And I'm hoping personally that this project fixes this at a systemic point in family conflict. And I'm hoping at some point that we see our numbers going down in our other programs, which is, I think, another real key aspect of this.
Thank you. Counselor Rogers, you have another question?
Yeah, I was just, who, who used to do this? Like was, was this done through the B C government before or?
In this area, no. There, they have voluntary mediation, pre-mediation in large centers. They do not have any kind of a mediation process like this, assessment process like this. What happened is last summer, the Attorney General had a justice, Family Justice Summit, at which at point the top gurus in the province got together and said, we want mediation in particular, the idea of mandatory mediation to become a priority in the province. So that was something they did then. So the group, I'm, I'm the vice chair of Mediate B C Society. So that group has taken it on itself to start pushing and it's fair to say this is the first project that's being rolled out. It's the first one in the province and it's one of the first in Canada in, of this kind. So, so there isn't a history of this kind of thing that I can point you to.
And because we're incorporating a social services organization in this, it's, it's, it's cross-sector.
Counselor Wilber, then Counselor Javecov?
Yeah, so I just know that you, you're asking for one office and a breakout room, what, your breakout room, what size was with it?
Yeah, the office is for, say, six people, right? That's what we're looking at. You've got mom and a dad and the mediator and then they may or may not have a support or they may or may not have a lawyer. So that's, so that's, I'm saying six people for that office. The breakout is so if they're having a private visit with their support and mediator, you need a place where they can do that separate from the other group, right? So, so that would be an office for, say, three people. So, so it's, it's, it's one modest office and one small office is what we're looking at.
Counselor Javecov?
When you're talking about user pay, a lot of the issues come as a result of low income or, you know?
Yes.
In the poverty level of society. How do you deal with that there?
Okay, at this point, that's a big question. In fact, I'm in Vancouver negotiating on that in two weeks. Right now, there is a, Legal Services has a budget for people who are below, I think it's thirty thousand a year, okay? So if it's that level, it's, the mediator would be funded if we can get them to qualify for the legal services model, they will be funded. And then above that, what we're assuming is that the mediator will be essentially subsidizing the entry-level ones and in exchange doing well on the top-end ones and the average better be enough to keep the mediators going because otherwise we lose the mediators, right? So, so that's the hope. And it's a, it's a crapshoot. I mean, I, I hope the model works for everybody and that's why this is, may or may not work. I, I think we've put the pieces together to make it work, but it's, I'm not guaranteeing this one, I'm just doing my best.
Thank you. Counselor Wilber?
I just wanted, in saying that to those that qualify for legal services, there's a huge difference of going to mediation and those costs compared to going to court and the costs that are incurred.
Sure.
So there's, to me, there's a benefit at the cost level. If you could, is that true?
Yeah.
Like, I mean, it's more cost-effective to do.
I'm an expensive mediator. I'm, I'm gonna be mentoring this. I'm not doing these mediations, I'm the mentor. My rate is four hundred an hour. Last year, my average mediation cost, I just figured it out, was two thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars per mediation. The average person in the province is paying fourteen thousand seven hundred to go through lawyers and court, okay? Per side, so that's minus both sides, so it's twelve hundred bucks a side. Theirs is fourteen thousand a side, okay? And it's more expensive in the Peace River than it is elsewhere because you're usually bringing lawyers in. So, so the, the numbers are, it's massive, the difference between what we're offering. I mean, this is, this is quantitatively different.
Thank you. So, yeah, go ahead, Charlie.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I applaud the work that Wayne's doing for sure. And I have a few questions. My assumption from what I've heard is that the desire is to have the staff associated with this project located in Dawson Creek, which is great, but for the devil's advocate point of view, how does that make sense when the three times the number of clients is Fort St. John? Is the other staff gonna be traveling to Fort St. John?
Here, the, the mediators will be located in Fort St. John and Dawson Creek. Right now, we have three mediators in Fort St. John and I'm trying to recruit one into Dawson. So, so it's the navigator who would be traveling to court days in both places, that's true. And, and, and there may be a bit more traveling because it's Dawson Creek versus Fort St. John. I do know that I do almost all the mediations in Fort St. John now and the traveling is, is not that onerous. It, it works.
Right, okay. And the second point, of course, you stated that staff locating here and in your financial argument, there's no guarantee that they may not, like many other professionals, choose to live in the referral area. That's just a comment.
Yeah, that's fair.
The, I, I'm just a little concerned about, obviously, a little concerned, I'm always concerned about hidden costs, additional costs to the city, downloading, the city picking up additional services. And that, of course, is, I'll be asking staff about that later on in the mayor's business. Just upfront with Wayne here, the, you know, there's a lot of talk, Wayne, about the impact of L A G should that go through and some announcements imminent and that this community could explode. And my notion is that if there's a real incremental increase in work, we will need additional staff as a city and we will need extra office space. That's just what I'm thinking. I don't expect a comment from you, that's unfair, but going back to this mechanics of it, so I heard you say two offices in the lower floor of City Hall and the clients will presumably be using the services of city receptions down there. Won't that be with more town, I just wondered about the property issues and, and the sort of logistics of all that, I would have thought a standard of separate locations would be more acceptable to be doing. Comments on that, please?
Yeah, it's Steph and Pablos here. I think the logistics of that would probably be answered like this. We, what we're hoping is, or what we're actually planning on is that Spickers will be, will be managing this, the logistics.
I didn't hear you, sorry, is that you need to speak into the microphone?
Hello? Spickers, we're hoping will be managing the logistics of this and the administration part. We were thinking of actually housing this in, in Spickers, but we just, we don't have the room, we are absolutely maxed right out. So in terms of dealing with a city reception, what we are planning on, that they'll be dealing with our reception just, I know, a couple hundred feet away, coming through our doors first, asking questions about where the office is and then sending them over to City Hall straight to the office. So those, those types of logistics, the administration part of it, will be dealing with internally at Spickers and so to take that burden away from actual city staff. Hope that answers your question.
I think that's very well.
Okay, thank you. So we'll, we appreciate you guys coming in this morning and giving us overview of the proposal. It does come back under mayor's business for consideration.
Thank you. And can we, if possible, have an answer today so I can let the Law Foundation know today? Is that?
Mayor's business will be in this agenda. So it'll come back in today's agenda. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next delegation, we have item six five, we have Tammy Coop from B V On Wheels, Mobile Pizza Trailer. Good morning, Tammy.
Good morning.
Welcome. The, the floor is yours, the desk is yours.
Thank you.
Thank you this morning.
Good morning. My name is Tammy Coop and my partner in crime unfortunately couldn't be here, Julie Vandenberg.
Sent you solo.
Yes. Good friend and my business partner. We acquired a pizza mobile trailer, a wood fire pizza oven trailer, three years ago. This will be our third summer running it. I have recently moved to Eris. I moved last June, June of two thousand fourteen. And basically, we would, I would like to, Julie will come when she can, but I would like to have the permission to set the pizza trailer up at the mile post zero parking lot by the traffic circle. Our goal is to sell pizzas and cold drinks at, at that mile post position. Benefits we have to Dawson Creek, we will provide a nutritious and delicious food service. I've lived in the Peace area for forty years, approximately. I'm a resident, as I say now, in Eris. I enjoy working with the public and tourists. I look forward to serving the community here and I did, three months, February this year, I worked for H and R Block in, in Dawson Creek here and really, really enjoyed that. I was a very busy receptionist, but absolutely enjoyed it. And the qualifications that Julie and I bring is we have a valid health permit, valid, we both have our food safe certificates. I have filled out the city business permit for Dawson Creek, but we were, I'm just waiting on a call from Vu, I guess, from the Northern Health Unit, but we do already have, our, we've got the, the seal to operate from Northern Health till two thousand sixteen. And we have insurance with two million liability and we will name Dawson Creek as an additional insurance. We've had fire inspections with Fort St. John, Grand Prairie and Hudson's Hope and have passed them with flying colors and we will be inspected again upon setup. And as well, Northern Health will send an inspector in for, for our food safe standards. And now the only requirement, but we did take a drive over there and we peeked and is a plug-in for refrigeration, if possible. And references that we have, for the last two years, we've done Canada Day in Fort St. John, we've done the Taylor Gold Panning, the Sweetwater Music Festival in Rolla. We've done those the last two summers. Last year, we did the Dawson Creek Stampede, which actually, I have to say, was our best weekend. We did the North Peace Fall Fair in Fort St. John, we've done the Chatwin Chainsaw Competition. We did go to Grand Prairie for three events there, the Grand Prairie Stampede, the Guitars and Wagons, and the Bud Country Fever. We don't want to travel that far and we have been invited back to all of those again this year. So my plan is to set up here in Dawson Creek, sell my pizzas and cold drinks. And I think it's five weekends out of the summer, we will take the pizza trailer and go to these events that we have been, we've, we've said yes to the, to the five. We're doing Canada Day and, and I did find out that Dawson Creek doesn't have a celebration for Canada Day. I understand it's done in Pous. So we're gonna stay with the Fort St. John. We, this will be our third year going to Canada Day and, and selling our pizzas there. And I know that this position, this spot where we'd like to put the trailer, Robin's Donuts is across the street. We will not be selling hot drinks, so if anyone comes and asks if we sell coffee, I will absolutely direct them across the street to Robin's Donuts. And, yeah. So that's, so basically, that's what we would like, is to set up over there if possible. I do have a picture of Julie and I with our pizza trailer. I believe this picture, this one picture.
Yeah, it was in our, it was.
Yeah, it was attached.
It was in our agenda.
Awesome. I believe that picture was actually Fort St. John and Canada Day.
Yeah, no, it was included in our agenda.
And I'm not sure, I think this is a Grand Prairie, yeah, or Canada. Anyway, so that's possible.
Thank you.
It'd be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Javecov?
When you talk about setting up, do you set up each day? Do you take the trailer away each evening and, and come back the next day or?
No, my, I'm hoping to, it takes an hour to get that oven hot to cook a pizza and we make our own crust, so it's all homemade. I would like to run eleven in the morning till seven P M if that's the need, if, if people are, are wanting pizza at that time. But no, we do have, my, I would like to get a motion light, I was thinking. If we could be there where the plug-ins are, I would like to purchase a motion light. And we also have a lock for the hitch and the pizza trailer locks up very well, so I would like to leave it rather than transport it back and forth every day and every morning, every night to Eris.
Thank you. Counselor Rogers?
Do you have an alternate location?
I, I, I do have something in mind, but I just see the RVs that park there and I understand tour buses pull in there. It just, it would absolutely be our ideal spot. But yes, I, I do have, I haven't checked up on it yet, but I do have another spot in mind.
Further questions? Counselor Javecov?
I don't know if you're aware that there's a, some major work going on at the N A R Park this summer. Have you been aware of that?
No, no.
Okay, because that may affect the approval.
Okay.
To go there. But I, I'm just wondering if you've considered the Mile Zero Park where the Pioneer Village is, sir?
The Rotary Park?
Yeah.
Is that Rotary Park? Um, yes, I have. I just, I just am concerned with rainy days. Because I haven't lived in Dawson and, and haven't been, haven't only been here, just coming up a year, I'm not, I don't know if it rains, do people come? I grew up, I, my children grew up in Taylor and we used to bring our kids to the Rotary Park often, but always on sunny days. So I'm just curious, I, I don't know. Is, am I going to get business if, if, if it's going to be raining there?
Well, it's more than Rotary Lake. I mean, the Pioneer Village is an attraction on its own, so.
Okay, okay.
With a campground.
Oh, so you mean right where, where, where the Pioneer Village is?
Where the hall is.
You're suggesting, okay.
Well, in the, yeah, where Sedine Hall is in the parking lot there somewhere, there's the RV park there too.
Right.
Which they accommodate, I think, seventy or eighty RV sites.
Okay, okay. I have had people, actually, when I was working at H and R Block, I had people suggest that. When, when I first moved here, Julie and I had kinda spotted that spot and just had, had to have had that in mind, but basically then, I'm, I'm asking if, if I can park somewhere in the city, whatever suits.
Okay, well, we'll, we, so first, we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
We're gonna bring it back under mayor's business later in the agenda, give it some consideration and sort of be later in today's agenda.
Perfect.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
So we're gonna take a five-minute, ten-minute, seven-minute break and we'll resume at ten after. Good morning again. We'll call ourselves back to order. We're back on the agenda at item eight bylaws. Eight point one, our council procedure amendment bylaw four two five six for adoption. Moved by Counselor Wilbur, seconded Counselor McFadden. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Eight point two, we have land sale amendment bylaw number four two six three, Sundown Canyon for consideration of adoption. Counselor McFadden? Moved. Seconded Counselor Parslow. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Thank you. And eight point three, we have report number fifteen oh nine four from the Deputy Director of Corporate Administration regarding our local area service establishment of bylaw.
I think that's a good one.
Moved by Counselor Parslow, seconded Counselor Schuman. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Thank you. Item nine, mayor's business, not a ton for me in the last week or so and I was gonna talk about the, our community leaders program. Counselor Wilbur did talk about that in her council business and so I got nothing. No.
Can we please have that marked in gold?
What about Sons of Norway?
What about Sons of Norway?
So I wanted to talk about two things, and I did. I, I attended on Friday afternoon the Seal Swim Club, had their first inter-club meet of the year. About 85, 87, uh, swimmers in the Seal Swim Club kicked off their first club meet, and it was so good to see these young kids, young, uh, kids engaged in the Seal Swim Club, and it looks like they're on their way to rebuilding the club from a, uh, significant number of those kids that were in there. It was so good to see the pool alive with, uh, that activity. And, uh, so I started it off and really appreciate the invitation, uh, by the Seal Swim Club. Yesterday, I was invited to the Sons of Norway, who, uh, had two, um, events yesterday afternoon, one at 2:00 at the Rotary Manor. And the Sons of Norway local club raised $41,603, um, through Making a Difference was the, the name of their campaign, and, uh, led by Scott Hendon, Ruth Finer, and Hannah, well, I can't think of Hannah's last name. Anyway, they raised $41,603 for Rotary Manor.
Wow.
And donated it yesterday afternoon, made the check presentation. Um, as a result of what is, the significance of this in terms of the Sons of Norway, uh, organization across Canada, the US, and Norway, where the three, um, uh, countries that are represented by Sons of Norway lodges. And so the International President of Sons of Norway, the President of the B.C. Chapter, as well as the Chief Executive Officer, were in town yesterday to help celebrate the, uh, event of these, uh, the local club, local chapter raising this money, and they had a banquet for them last night. And so Laverne and I attended, uh, yesterday to the Rotary Manor and the banquet last night. Really appreciate the invitation, uh, from the Sons of Norway, and, uh, a great, a great group of people in our community who have done some amazing, uh, work. We had two delegations today in, uh, that brought, we'll bring back to council. And the first one, we had, uh, Wayne Plannert and Stefan Pavlis in regards to the Navigator Program. They're trying to kick off for, uh, mediation for family, uh, services. And, uh, Jim, maybe can we ask you to give us a bit of an update on, from your perspective in terms of their request or ask that we provide them with office space and how and can that be accommodated?
Uh, so through your worship, in this building, we have two unoccupied spaces. One is the office across from myself, and the other is the open room that you're familiar with, because we often hold our, uh, Christmas get-togethers there. That's the last, last space I have left in the building. Um, obviously, my understanding of a modest office differs from, uh, someone long time, uh, partner in a law firm. So the only office in the building at the moment that can accommodate six people is the Mayor's Office. Uh, so it would have to be the open room downstairs would have to be converted into the quote modest office, and then the office up here would have to be the breakout office.
Okay. Council Schuman?
Um, so I, I'm prepared to move that we, um, we grant this office space to this group. I think that, uh, they've adequately, uh, expressed the, the need for such a thing in, in the region, in, in Dawson Creek. And, uh, so I, I would make that motion and hope that council would support it.
Thank you. Seconded, Council Wilbur. Discussion. Council, so Council McFadden, Wilbur, Jevetkov?
I'll be supporting the motion. Dawson Creek has considered itself to be forward-thinking and innovative in years gone by, and, uh, this may or may not, uh, going forward, be completely successful, but I think we need to give them the opportunity to try to make it work.
Council Wilbur?
I'm just wondering, Jim, that, so the space downstairs, uh, then would they have access from Spickers through the back, or would they have to come through the front doors of City Hall? How, do we see that?
So with respect to Stefan's talk about, um, you know, the check-in being over there, we can't allow people to wander unsupervised through our building.
Right.
So you're going to have to stop at our receptionist downstairs, um, coming into that office. So it'll have to be, office hours will only be available during the time we have the receptionist downstairs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Council Jevetkov and Council Rogers?
I don't support the motion. I mean, you know, I don't see them coming up here and having meetings up in the middle of where administration is working. Uh, there's a lot of stuff goes on up here that's confidential, there's, you know, to me, to be, to me, it would be disruptive. And downstairs, I mean, that room was developed for a purpose down there, and I don't imagine the purpose has disappeared. It's probably, um, you know, even increased in need. Uh, so the downloading aspect of this, I mean, there's other places, yeah, it would be great if the city would give them something for nothing. Uh, and it's an awesome program, I'm sure, especially involving kids. Uh, I don't know exactly how, how it's going to work, because, uh, my understanding is a lot of these situations, uh, involve child abuse, and the mothers are taking the kids away from that. So to try and reconcile that, you know, whether it's workable or not, I'm, I don't know. Um, but I've got a lot of empathy for those families and those kids especially. To me, I think they have to do a little more investigation. There are, there's got to be other options, uh, in the area. I mean, even if it's another city-owned building, we've got, uh, uh, the old post office, there's, uh, you know, there's got to be other room. There's an Alkin Friendship Center that has huge unused space in there, uh, with access from the exterior, from the outside. It could be isolated quite easily. So I'll be voting against it. I, I just don't see where it fits here. Yeah, I know, we're all supportive, we're all, uh, you know, want to see this thing work successfully, but this is not the place to do it here. Uh, if we had a, uh, suitable offices, I could probably support, support it, but I don't think we do.
Thank you. Council Rogers?
I can't support it either. Um, City Hall is where the corporation, City of Dawson Creek, does its work. We take care of water, roads, sewer, other infrastructures. Um, and this part of it doesn't fit in to the day-to-day operations of the city. Um, I think that, um, I think that it should be, it should be put somewhere else. I'm not in favor of the downloading. Uh, there is a building that's right across from the, um, from the courthouse, it is empty. Um, and there's the other lawyers' offices are over in that same area. Um, I just, I just don't believe that this is something that the corporation should be housing inside our office building.
Thank you. Further? Yes, go ahead, Council Parslow.
Yeah, I, I really, I would be tempted to date this motion, and, and kind of, uh, aghast at this motion, actually. Um, I just can't help but look myself at Jim's office there and, uh, with his staff and all the materials that are there, and we've got, uh, people from the outside wandering through. I mean, regardless of that, we as part of our strategic plan, uh, and I know some councillors who, um, see in the vision of the needs of the community, an economic development officer. Um, who knows if that gets approved, but it's certainly opened the discussion. Where would an economic development officer and all his or her materials be housed in the thinking of councillors who are sort of thinking about an economic development officer? I agree with the statements of Council Jevetkov and Rogers, but I would like to add that we still have some, you know, strategic plans, a discussion. We would see some, if it, if it gets the backing of council, increasing staff, and, um, we need to have those staff. So I think this is, excuse me, I don't wish to be offensive to anyone right now, playing this ridiculous, uh, notion. I'm sorry for saying that, but I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Wilbur?
Um, I don't think, uh, the motion is referring to the office space across from Jim's office. I think it was referring to the open space downstairs that could be renovated. But at one time, I believe this building also housed the school board. So it has been a multipurpose use facility for our community, and, um, it's a pilot project. Do we know if it's going to work or not? We don't, but I, I think it deserves the opportunity to get it off the ground. And I also like the idea that they would like Dawson Creek to be the hub and not Fort St. John. And I think, um, if not here, then somewhere, we owe them at least the ability to try. And I think we owe the families, um, the ability to have that available for them. And in most cases where there's severe issues, those don't go to mediation, they go to court. Mediation is about families that realize it's broken down, and they need to go their separate ways and don't need to incur those, those costs. And I can say that because I've been there and done it myself. So, um, I, I think it deserves an opportunity. We have open space downstairs. Um, staff has said that that's available space. I do not see it being across from Jim's office or upstairs, so I will support the motion I've seconded.
Thank you. Council Rogers and Co- sorry, Council Rogers, Council Jevetkov, Council Parslow?
Just one more. Um, it's, it would be a, it would be a distraction to our staff that's here already operating, uh, going through their operations of the city. Where if we, if we turn around and we, we lose the space that is downstairs, we are unable to grow. As a corporation, we wanted to hire somebody, where are we going to put tho- where are we going to put those people? We, we, are you, are we going to, it's, it's, I, I really can't believe that we're even talking about this at this point. Um, you know, there's, there's other areas where they could be working in the city, other, other buildings that the city has. Um, I, I, I understand why they want to come here. I don't agree with it. Uh, this is where we, this is where we run the city from. This is our building, and that's what it should be used for, for running city operations.
Thank you. Council Jevetkov?
Uh, there hasn't been any talk about, uh, the funding for it. I mean, that's, uh, new money to us. Surely, we're not going to, um, start spending money for, for, uh, an outside organization to renovate, uh, office space. It, it's just, it does not fit here. You know, there are other places. The Spickers is quick to say, well, you know, they're full. Well, maybe they should, uh, review their, uh, staffing and their, where their accommodations are. But there's, this is just not the fit for this, uh, purpose. And if, if, if it's a pilot project, great, put it into a temporary place and, uh, see if it's going to work. I don't see any reason why it won't work, but, you know, get it, get it someplace where it's got some chance of success. Has anybody even talked to the staff? Do the staff want this kind of activity, uh, included in their workspace? Like staff, you know, I mean, how is it going to affect them? Or do they go outside the door mumbling and grumbling about it later? Like, this is just too, too much of a knee-jerk reaction, as far as I'm concerned.
Council Parslow?
Yes, I stand to be corrected. I thought that the request was to make our office as well as the office for staff. Will you correct me with that, Mayor?
Jim?
Uh, through your worship, I believe the request is for the two. Uh, and having the definitions, uh, was very useful this morning. So one office that can seat six and another that can seat three. Uh, I can't get them both in that space downstairs, plus, um, as you know, in this building, uh, soundproofing is kind of an issue. And I expect, um, there is going to be, no matter where this use is located, it's already an issue for yourself. You have the only soundproofed office in the building, and a lot of business is conducted in your office exactly because it's soundproofed. Um, and I can't renovate downstairs to soundproof, so that won't be an option. I can't provide a parking spot. We're already pooling plug-ins, uh, just with the staff we have. So whoever this navigator is, they're not going to have a plug-in parking spot. They're going to have to park against the roadway over there. Uh, I had an ongoing, I have an ongoing project to, uh, move all of our reception folk to the ground-level floor, um, remove the, uh, no longer used reception area and go to a teller lineup, um, uh, focus, so that the customers don't have to bounce back and forth from rec to register their kids in swimming, to, um, engineering to get a building permit, to, uh, finance, to pay their water bill. We're going to a teller lineup system so that you will just go to the first available person who will be able to help you on any of it. Um, modeled on what the two senior levels of government have done. Except now I'm going to have to leave somebody downstairs, because again, um, these are folks who are coming in by definition in a state of, uh, upheaval, uh, in a state of emotion. And, um, the area we're talking about is not visible from the front counter area, to the front counter area downstairs, so people, the, the alternative was you just direct them downstairs and they wander up and down the corridor until I find the office. I mean, for, um, there's going to be more to this than a renovation. That's all I'm saying.
Further discussion? Council Parslow?
So it's timeless the information provided by staff. I, I stick by my statement that, uh, Council Wilbur is structured against. So I believe that they need to, uh, find, uh, smooth the navigator program, um, uh, a inappropriate in our building, and secondly, uh, do not enable the council to deal with its plans for the future. And, um, I think, uh, violate, we will necessitate the violation of what I saw considered a confidential area of, of Council Wilbur and Jim.
Thank you. Further comments? Further discussion? Council Rogers?
Well, I know that there's, looks like it's three against three right now, so maybe I have to convince your worship. I would, I would be, I would be curious to, to find out what the CAO has to say, um, because Mr. Jevetkov brought up, you know, what, what would the reaction of staff be? And as, as the CAO is, is the superintendent, for lack of a better word, of, of all of the staff, um, has he had any feelings from staff before we even make this decision? Because it's staff that's, that, uh, that are going to be disrupted. It's not us as a council, because we're, we're hardly ever here. Um, and when we are here, you know, and we're talking confidentially, are we going to be assured that that is actually going to be happening? Anyways, um, I would just like to ask the CAO what he thinks the implication would be towards staff.
Uh, so through your worship, we've had no discussions about that, but we will have to. Uh, in terms of workplace safety, we'll have to, um, I'm sure you're aware, the customers for, um, uh, Spickers or the customers for, uh, Ministry of Children and Family, uh, who are two buildings proximate to us, are not the same customers as our customers. Or if they are the same customers, they're not in the same headspace when they're in, um, our building versus those buildings. So we'll have to talk about those protocols. Um, what that'll look like, I don't know. Um, I can say from personal experience, as you, many of you know, I've been through three divorces. Um, there was never a time, uh, in the course of those proceedings where, um, myself, my soon-to-be ex-spouse, and our lawyers were together where there wasn't some element of contention. And, um, no, I'm actually not particularly comfortable having that happen across the hall from me. I'm pretty sure the rec programmers, uh, who are housed downstairs, whose life is about happy, happy, are going to find it challenging. I'm just trying to be as honest as I can here. This, um, uh, this is a mix we've never tried before. So though, if this is council's decision, we'll try. Uh, we'll have to swap and start. I mean, there will be, some things will work, some things won't. I mean, eventually, you'll work it all out, but it's certainly not going to be seamless.
Thank you. Further discussion? Are you ready for the question? Before I do that, I'm going to speak to it, because, um, for me, the understanding of renovations, first of all, I completely agree with the proposal that this is an absolute, uh, essential part of trying to get families, uh, through a difficult, difficult process. And, and litigation through the courthouse isn't, uh, a model that's conducive to trying to get you through that. It's conducive to try to, um, in my view, having lived civil litigation, it's, uh, a whole different process. So I love the idea of having a process where it's through nav- through the mediation, the navigator process that puts that mediation process... The navigator process that puts that mediation process together is an administrative process. The next step to that is then the actual mediations that take place, that then are coordinated and handled. And I honestly, I don't have any issues whatsoever with the function of that taking place, but on the proviso, on the condition that we can accommodate it without the impact to our operations. And I think that has to be our first and utmost priority in terms of the business of the city. And so my understanding of renovations to the facility to accommodate that would be under the administrator's, the CAO's responsibility to ensure that the operations of the city can be handled on that basis. And so if that could be accommodated in the downstairs area, I'm good with having that happen, but not having it as it's going to flow through the entire facility. And from that perspective, I can't support it. Ready for the question? Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
I'm opposed.
It's defeated. Further discussion on that? Anything? Next item we have, we have Tammy Coke from the pizza trailer that wanted to set up a wheels, her trailer at the NER Park. Discussion?
I'd like to make a motion if that's --
Yep. Go ahead.
I'd like to move that this lady be referred to the Mauzero Park Society to seek approval for locating a suitable spot at the Pioneer Village or at a location within their jurisdiction.
Thank you. Do you have a second, or? Counselor Schuman? Discussion? Counselor Jevetkov? Counselor Wilbur?
I'm just wondering if there's, if we should include provisions to locate on the city property if it's vetted through administration. There are places, you know, that may from time to time be suitable to locate on city property. But my understanding of the NER Park is that it's not going to be suitable for much of the year. So if we add it into the motion that something to the effect that we agree in principle with locating on city property, as long as it's vetted through administration.
Thank you. Is that -- Jim?
So through your worship, your current business licensing bylaw allows mobile vendors, but specifically states that they can't be on a roadway or a sidewalk unless the road is closed or there's an encroachment agreement on the sidewalk. And you've traditionally not allowed these commercial activities in any of your parks. But if the person strikes a deal with a private landowner in a properly-zoned commercial area, it's just a, if they pass the health inspection, then they're allowed. So you have, you've not previously allowed them on your property, but you have, your scheme allows them any place they can make a deal with a landowner who is in the right zone. You have always allowed the Mauzero Park Society to make their own decisions about the leased land out there, the same as Connie gets to make her own decisions about the leased area she has. I mean, the leased areas, you leave that up to whoever the leaseholder is.
Does that work for you then?
How does it apply to any art park?
So NER Park, you've not allowed any commercial activity there, except the ones that are your fee-for-service groups, the art society and tourism. You have allowed fundraisers, so a lot of hot dog sales go on there. But the last time you made a specific lease for a commercial activity was the Blue Goose Caboose. So that lease operated semi-successfully for a couple of years.
Counselor Wilbur?
Oh, I like the idea of her being directed to talk to the Mauzero Park Society for a couple of reasons. I don't think that we should be providing power to any vendors to run their portable units, so that concerns me about being on city property. They would then expect some sort of utility service. And I see that the Mauzero Park Society could make some arrangements in a lease agreement or something with this particular vendor and having that space. So I totally support her going out there, and I think she would have a great summer out there with those facilities.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say a few more things. But just, I'm still having difficulty hearing one or two counts, but Counsel Wilbur.
Sorry.
I thought I didn't hear too much of what she said. There are, but you like the idea of the, with the, the current, the Mauzero Park Society. Just a little hangup I have about mobile vendors in the city is I don't like, they don't pay property tax. And some of these things where we're in direct competition with, in this case, established pizza vendors who have leased a facility or own a facility, but moving out there to the Mauzero Park is some distance from competition. And it's, the place is a well-used place in the summer. Anyone who's gone to Lothelake in hot weather, it's pretty crowded. And I think it would also be a good for the tourists to have that opportunity, find something that's freshly made. So I really think it would be a good fit out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. That's it for me. Item 10, diary.
Nothing new on the diary, your worship?
11, consent calendar. And a number of items to be received. Counselor Wilbur? Seconded. Counselor McFadden? Anything specific that we need to talk about there? Brenda? No? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Strategic priorities chart?
Nothing new on the chart, your worship?
Question and answer period.
No one has signed up.
Media question. Johnny?
I have something, there's something on the committee of the whole agenda, kind of jumping around, but for which department it was under, but there's about the ICDC on city audit.
Kevin's through Director of Infrastructure?
Yeah, I figured I might just get that out of the way. There was mention that doing that review would cost 75,000 to 90,000. And I'm just wondering when council make a decision on whether to go forward with that.
When we get the report?
There's a report coming from --
This one?
Oh, okay.
Kevin's going to give us a report on it?
In like 20 minutes or something.
Yeah.
A half hour? Okay. And then I just have some questions.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, we'll move to Committee of the Whole. Is our staff sergeant in?
I think so.
But Shorty's here if you want to.
So we'll go with, we'll go with the fire chief's in, so we'll move to item 15-2. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning. I said we had a good weekend, safe weekend?
How about you?
I did. It was quiet weekend. But you see, last month was not quiet, so I'm reserving my comments because --
Yes, you are.
You know, Murphy's Law kicks in every now and then, so that happened. So we had quite a few calls last month. So you have the report in front of you, if there's any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead. Counselor Parswell?
Shorty, the $20,000 players of handball tournaments, how is that money used, approved that it go to?
How's it what, sorry?
Who does the money go to for your --
It goes to the B.C. Professional Firefighters Burn Fund.
Ah, good. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor McFadden?
Good morning, Chief. Just from my information and perhaps the public, there was, what's required now if I want to burn some leaves in my backyard? Do I have to get a permit or just notify you or?
No, right now, there's a ban on any fires, open fires. Really, the only thing we're allowing to burn is if you have a, like a fire pit in your backyard and you're going to roast some hot dogs.
Yeah, there was somebody burning grass up in my area there over the weekend, and I thought, I wonder what's required, what they have to do or shouldn't be doing. And so no burning backyard except fire pit right now. Thank you.
Further questions? Jim?
Your worship, we should bring up an item that you'll be aware of that the rest of council may not be, but the chief and I have been participating in some meetings with the regional district. At the moment, your 911 service has the two paid detachments, the Fort St. John detachment, the Dawson Creek detachment, dispatch fire north, fire calls north and south of the river. So an original 911 call will be answered wherever they're answered, Kamloops or someplace like that. And if you say you require a fire, it's switched to our hall, and our hall dispatches not only our own firefighters, but also, say, the Pooch Department or the Tombs Lake Department or the Eris Department. And it's, in compensation, the regional district pays for two full-time firefighters and maintains the equipment. And so that's the system that's been in place since 911 was put in place. The regional district is now contemplating outsourcing all of that and moving it to a call center somewhere, could be anywhere in the world, to do that dispatch. The regional district has not identified any issues with service. There are some issues with equipment breakdown, but in terms of the service provided, there's no issues identified there. It's strictly a cost-saving venture that is motivating this. But just, you know, for your, for your information, if it goes through at the regional board, what would happen is we would lose funding for two firefighters and have to deal with that. And your fire calls would be, I don't know, answered in New Delhi or some such place.
Counselor Wilbur?
Well, then that brings to mind, I guess, your staff, or Shorty can answer. What does that do to our call-out times, our response times?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't affect our response times. What Jim's referring to is we dispatch six other departments in the South Peace, and it would, it may affect them, but to what, I don't know.
Yeah, we have argued that this might not be an appropriate target for cost-saving, but we're not necessarily being well-received by the party.
Counselor McFadden?
Jim, you mentioned that one of the reasons for looking at other options was the equipment breakdown. You mean firefighting apparatus or the phone system?
So I'm talking about the dispatch hardware and software. So it's at a point where it needs an upgrade. And so because this is a region-wide service, functionally, who pays for this? Mostly is the industrial assessment in the unincorporated area. About 85% of the cost is paid for by those pipelines and compressor stations, despite which the party is looking to save them that money.
And that may cost the city of Dawson, should there be a major change? It may cost the city two firefighting positions or the equivalent.
It will be entirely up to council what we do with the revenue shortfall. But at the moment, you're on staff, you're on-shift firefighters dispatch during the evenings and nights, and you have dispatched position during the eight to five hours on the weekend, on the weekdays.
Thank you.
No bearing on our, it's, this is strictly dispatch and 911, it has no bearing on our fire protection service area agreements?
Correct. I don't believe it is.
They'd be dispatched in the same fashion. So what happens now if the call comes to us? It's not the big city. So there's a list that the on-shift folks have of who they would call for, say, the Eris Fire Department. And sometimes somebody's at the other end of the line and sometimes they're not. When they are, eventually someone is found, not eventually, but in short order, someone is found. They're given the descriptions, they stay on the line. We'll often not hand that call off during the entire length of the call, because they're not set up with the facilities to take the call over. Plus, they're asking for advice at the same time as they're asking for information. That'll all, that touch won't be there. The reason there's cost savings is because those elements are backed out.
So this would, so we then handle for Chatwin, Tumblr Ridge, Poo Scoopy, and the volunteers as well?
We do now, but we will not after this goes through.
Okay.
And I just want to just, I may not have answered your question the way you, the way you wanted to hear it, Counselor Wilbur, is the effect that it might have on our response times is, if you think about it now, the call comes in, 911, it gets to Prince George. Prince George asks you, what's your emergency? They say, my house is on fire. They transfer the call to us, and as soon as we get that call, we dispatch our guys. Our timeline was, is within 90 seconds of that call receiving at the station that our guys are out the door. So now, if you take a look at it, we call from here to New Delhi. New Delhi will now assess that call, who then in turn would send it to somebody in Canada, who in turn would assess that call, who in turn would then reroute it to us, and then we would go. So what that timeline is, who knows?
And if the caller says, and this is a real-life example off the tapes, you know, my outbuilding's on fire, I'm the welding shop right across from the turnoff to the ski hill. Nobody's going there, because the person on the other end of the line has no idea what that might be.
Counselor Schuman and Counselor Wilbur?
We actually heard from a gentleman at our budget meeting with regards to how the current 911 system isn't working for him, just for 911, not the fire system. And so we were, we were talking, remember, we were talking to him, and we were saying, oh, that's why it's so great that we have, you know, we are the dispatch for our fires, because we know where the ski hill is. We know where the old drive-in was. We know where the old, right? And so when those calls come in, we know where we're going, because we're here. And so I would see it as a terrible thing to have our fire dispatch being in New Delhi. I won't be supporting that if I'm at the regional district meeting.
Counselor Wilbur, then Counselor Rogers?
Yeah, along the same lines. I don't think the Peace River Regional District understands what that means, that in the end, I don't think there is a cost savings, and we're one of the few that have that local ability to know that the welding shop's across from the ski hill. I don't think they understand the implications of making that decision. And I would hope that whoever's sitting there, that we stress that to them, because I really don't think they understand what it means, or the times that it takes for those calls to get through. And a lot of times when that, it is sent to New Delhi, we're using as an example, sometimes those calls are lost, and you've got to start over again. I mean, to me, my heart just goes, ah! Like, you know, I don't think they understand what they're doing to their service.
Thank you. Counselor Rogers?
Okay, true story. Couple weeks ago, I'm actually in Grand Prairie. We needed an ambulance, and we're at Macklin Field, which is five blocks from the hospital, and that's where the ambulance get dispatched out of. So I'm on 911, and I'm on the phone for 15 minutes, and I says to the girl, I said, where are you at? And she goes, well, I'm at Calgary. And I said, okay. You realize that the ambulance is like five blocks from where we are, and it's been 15 minutes? And she goes, actually, it's been 20 minutes. And I said, where's this ambulance coming from? And she said Beaver Lodge. So I could just see, something like that is just not a great idea.
So we'll, we'll follow it through. Thank you.
You're just going to have one vote when it comes up, that's all.
Thank you.
One other question though?
Yep, go ahead.
Fire training facility, the regional district had said at their last meeting that they were going to start looking into it. Have you had a call from them at all or anything like that?
Administration will start to gather the information on it and start to bring it back. So I would assume that now that they've got the approval from the board to start to put that together, that Chris and team will start to put that together.
Chris probably will be the person doing it.
But it's a positive step, and thank you for raising that, that regional districts are going to look at the consideration of the impacts of a regional center and start to put that together from the perspective of doing some analysis on it. So we'll see, we'll see how that unfolds. Anything further for the chief? Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. See, we have the RCMP in attendance. Good morning. Welcome. You're up.
You're up, Max.
Mike? Good morning.
It's Monday morning.
Welcome.
Good morning, everybody.
Floris, yours?
Thank you, sir. As far as attachment news goes, we have two new constables here at Dawson Creek, Constable Tekeah and Constable Smith. They just arrived from training academy in Depot, and they're getting their feet wet in the community, and it's going good for both of them so far. We've lost Constable Edwards, he's gone to Williams Lake, on to bigger and better things, apparently. His job will be replaced here pretty soon. We've got internal staffing action that we put out, it's closed, and the decision on that will be made later on today, who's going to take his spot. National job competition for one of our vacant corporal positions has closed. We don't have an idea yet of how many people have applied and who those people are yet. The decision on who that will be will probably be another month or so down the line, and then there's, of course, the transferring procedure, so, but it's in the works. And actually, the new corporal and his wife were here in Dawson Creek last week on our house hunting trip, and they hope to be here sometime around the middle of July. So, looking forward to seeing them both. And for office manager position, that job action's still ongoing, so as of yet, no decision on that as yet. Now, for our calls for service, April this year, we had eight hundred and eight calls for service, and that's up from seven hundred and twenty-five over last year in April, and up slightly over last month. Last month, I think, seven hundred and ninety-four. Not a huge increase, but an increase nevertheless. And as requested by council, we attended twenty-one mental health complaints, and twelve of those resulted in an apprehension of the person under the Mental Health Act. And one of those apprehensions took four members, one took one, and the remainder took two members each to attend to and deal with successfully. And the total cost as far as man-hours for those apprehensions was forty-one. That's not including the man-hours involved and the other ones that didn't result in an apprehension, but just for those ones, you guys wanted to keep a tally on that, so that was for just the month of April. Now, you guys all have a copy of the statistics. It indicates an increase in break-in enters and thefts. A lot of those, however, can be attributed to, Staff Kebo mentioned a couple of big files and series that we had, and he presented that in the last Community of the Whole report. Those weren't reflected in the March stats, so they came out in April, so the stats themselves are a little skewed. They've already been spoken to, so I wouldn't be alarmed on that one too much. The pedestrian hit-and-run fatality that we had, the investigation on that's still ongoing, and we continue to urge anybody having any information on that, however insignificant they think it might be to please contact us. If they want to be anonymous, go through Crime Stoppers. Anything you could possibly add would be greatly appreciated. We'd like to see this have a successful conclusion for everybody involved. And I guess, to wrap up on something that's new, ATVs, the change is there. Starting June first, all ATVs have to be plated and registered, and that can be done through your insurance company. Not sure what the fee is for that. I haven't done it myself yet, sadly. But, you know, if you're out there and something happens, you could get a fine of fifty-eight dollars under the Off-Road Vehicle Act, but it is something that is coming new, and everybody should be aware of it.
Thank you. Questions, Counselor Javecaw?
So, I've got a 1983 Quad. Do I have to get it, like, registered?
Yeah, from what I understand, everything, regardless of CC or age, has to be registered. I'm not sure how the tax implications work. Like I said, I've got three to do myself, and I haven't just gone through the hoops yet, so I can't speak to that.
How about my ride on John Deere tractor? Lawnmower?
If you are driving it, yes.
I wouldn't mind scooting across the street and cutting some old person's lawn, but I don't want to end up in the backseat of the police guard handhouse.
I don't think your lawnmower is that. This is more about ATVs racing up and down country roads and...
That is an ATV, too.
That's not an ATV.
I think they're thinking more of the recreational-type vehicles.
Yeah, I was just being...
Further questions for Sergeant Richard? Counselor Schuman?
That's not a question, but I really do appreciate those stats. It's really interesting to me that twelve calls would result in forty-one hours, and so, it's not just the big cities that are being bogged down with these. So, it helps me at the provincial level when we're having these conversations, so thank you.
No, that's great. I have a question for you, though, because I just wasn't interested, I wasn't involved in the initial thing with Staff Kebo. Did you just want a snapshot of that month, or you didn't want it continuing?
So, on that third attachment that we have, where it shows the, all of the 911 calls, the false alarms, noise complaints, initially, we had that mental health calls on there, and then it disappeared, and that's what I was wanting back. I mean, the additional information, I mean, this says, "Mental health calls, twenty-one," but I don't know how much work, I don't want to cause you guys a whole bunch of work. Okay, that's not my game here, but I just should try to get a picture of what the mental health situation in Dawson Creek is causing, is impacting our police force. That was my initial sort of ask, but I'm happy with it just to be noted on the third attachment where all the different things are noted.
Okay.
I'm happy with that. I might have questions, so you might want to be, have some of those stats due, but this is good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's, honestly, it was alarming, not alarming, but it was amazing to me to see forty hours of time put in for that. So, I think it's great information that is included in that, because it certainly helps us then, as we're lobbying for that support from staffing, to be able to say, "Look, this is an amazing amount of activity that's taking place by our members," and so, I really think it's great information. So, I appreciate you guys doing that. As Counselor Schuman said, if it's not a ton of work to be able to log it onto our stats for a monthly basis, it's just very helpful.
Thank you.
Counselor Rogers?
I would just like to say that I'd like to see the stats continue. There's personal reasons, and there's other reasons why I'd like to see it, without getting into it. I'd like to see the stats continue.
Like you said, it's very helpful.
Anything further for Sergeant Richard? Mike, thanks very much. Appreciate you coming in this morning and giving us an update. Thank you. Fifteen-three, we have a report from our Director of Corporate Administration. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Why, thank you.
Makes you have been here all day.
First thing I want to talk about is the NCLGA Conference Event Planner. The RFP did not produce any responses, so I'm working on finding someone for that position, and we will be, hopefully, I'll let you know later on this week. I have a hopeful prospect for that. Another thing I wanted to mention that's not in my report is the grant writer that resigned. Once we get her final reporting, we do have another one lined up, so hopefully, we can carry on with that fairly quickly, and we'll be advertising for community groups to use her services, plus city staff as well. And the other thing was, June fifteenth is the next council meeting, which will have the new agenda deadline of June eighth, so we'll get that information out to developers, and we'll be sticking to that deadline strictly. That's all I have, unless there's questions.
Thank you, Brenda. Questions? Counselor Javecaw?
I've got four questions. Can I ask them all one after another?
Yes, yeah, you may, if you start at number four.
Regarding bylaws, Halverson's Boarding House, which is down by Reg Norman Trucking, it's an old boarding house, like, very old. In nineteen seventy-four, when I started fire suppression activities here, we used to recruit firefighters from Halverson's Boarding House. But lately, like, part of it has been demolished, the front end. The back end, it's not only unsightly, but it's, safety-wise, I don't think it's structurally sound. Is there anything in the works to deal with that, or?
Can you answer?
Have we not received any plates or lots of...
Now, if that was a call to 911, they wouldn't know where Halverson's Boarding House is.
All of us know. Oh, we know where Halverson's is. Not Counselor Rogers.
I don't know if I'm that old.
I know where Reg is.
Yeah, I know where Reg is, too. I have a feeling I know where he's.
The second question is, and maybe it's more related to the mayor, but during the roundtable that we had, that you had at the Best Western, the airport was brought up as a significant issue, I think, for industry. Has there been any follow-up on that, or sort of what's, anything rolled out from that?
Yeah, so we've had some conversations with the Hawk Air President, Jay Dilly, and so, I'm in the stages now of just kicking off the next phase of that, and we've interacted with the Calgary industry people. Jay is very interested in looking at some alternative levels of service, as was indicated by the industry folks there. We've had some conversations with them. They are anticipating the Patronus announcement that was just recently, that second state. So, we're hoping to have a follow-up to that in August, at which time, we'll be further down the road with the Patronus announcement and the other things. Industry are very interested in that, and so, we're going to have Jay involved in that as a specific topic under the next session.
Okay, the reason I brought it up is, there's a mention of another roundtable, and I think it's important to try and, you know, glean some specifics and follow through with them. The NCLGA event planner, is that a cost that will be borne by the city, or is it going to be borne by the association?
It's going to be covered by sponsorships.
Okay. And the last question is about the Agricultural Land Commission. You mentioned in here that they indicated that they weren't happy with the expansion that Wayne Hanson proposed. Is that an official position? Like, has the application gone in and they've responded, or how did that happen?
Those are requests for comments, and those were their comments provided to us. We take those comments, plus the ones from the regional district, plus our approval from the city, and we send that application into the province.
So, we request comments from the ALR before we make the application to the ALR, or the commission?
Yeah, and to the PRRD. It's legislated that we have to get the two comments from those two.
So, were those comments made by the previous commissioner? I imagine they were, because he was just fired here in the last couple of weeks.
They were received directly from Martin Collins, who's a staff, yeah.
Okay. That's all the questions I had.
Thank you. Further questions for Brenda? Thank you. Thank you, Brenda. Fifteen-four, report from the Chief Financial Officer. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have the report in front of me. Basically, it just summarizes that we're just about at the end of our budget and audit cycle, and we're just cleaning up the year-end rollover and making sure all our details are in place, Ts across, Is are dotted, and then we're going to move forward with the projects that are on our list. So, that's basically the gist of the report, and I hope everybody got their wonderful final budget bylaw booklet that we prepared for council and mayor. And it's just a really brief document that you can refer to through the year in the event that you get questions from residents, or something comes up and you need to check in. If you need some instruction on where everything is, come and see me in my office. And then, finally, with our news notes, we had one of our key individuals that left on maternity leave was expecting a baby, and she had a baby girl last Tuesday, I believe it was, Sarah Nicole Grace. So, we just wanted to congratulate her, welcome the little one to the community, and wish her all the best. So, that's pretty much it from finance.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Charlie, any questions? Thank you. Next, we have the report from Director of Infrastructure. Good morning, Sean.
Good morning, everybody.
Welcome.
So, this morning, I just wanted to kind of recap one of a few things we've discussed previously. Wanted to touch on reclaimed water. Our Public Works Department is now up and running and using reclaimed water for our city operations. We have stickered and adapted all of our equipment accordingly. We have a purple sticker on our equipment that says reclaimed and non-podable, so we're currently using it for flushing sewer mains, street sweeping, sidewalk washing, and as of this week, we will be watering flowers and trees with it. So, that's a good news story. It's tough when you're in infrastructure, right, to find the good news ones?
Yeah, yeah, I hear you.
Anyways, I wanted to touch on the fairgrounds. You know, this winter, we had an unfortunate freeze and breakout there. We have that repaired, and we've actually went through and replaced all of the fittings and infrastructure necessary for a very minimal cost. It was under a thousand dollars to take care of all of those repairs, so the fairgrounds has water to all of its facilities.
Probably, the leaseholders had to pay more than that, though, because there were at least two broken toilets, we know of, so they will have been replacing them at greater expense than leaving.
So, that's actually another good news story compared to what it could have been.
Good.
Do they have to replace those with low-flow toilets? I guess that's pretty much all you can buy nowadays, right?
It is pretty much, yeah. Our Santee dump, our hydrocarbon detection equipment has been installed, and it's been up and running at the dump for over a week successfully, which I think is also fantastic.
You're just pulling good news.
Absolutely. Spring cleanup, in regards to sweeping, is complete. We've been over the town twice, so we're just down to our regular sweeping program now, which is three days a week. We have our pile of screenings in the public works yard, which we will be having someone actually screen and recycle for other uses. We still have a little bit of sidewalk cleaning to do in regards to spring cleanup and a few landscape repairs, but other than that, we'll be moving on to regular programs. In regards to capital projects with budget approval, we will be out to tender today on our sewer line upgrade, which starts at Ninety-Ninth and Seventeenth, and goes up to basically Rotary Lake. And as well, as of this Wednesday, we should be out to tender for our new water line, which leaves the Lurin Reservoir and ties into Twenty-first Street. That's all that I have for you today.
Good. Thanks. Counselor Rogers, Counselor McFadden?
One thing. Hundred and fourth, between eighth and thirteenth, slated for paving.
Correct.
Because you just voted on that. I see Billy Jacobson was digging up on Hundred and Fourth, like, to do a curb stop. And because we worked down there so many times, has that sewer and water main along Hundred and Fourth between eighth and thirteenth been changed?
Not changed, not for a number of years. But what we did do prior to putting this forward for Capital Works for paving, is we took cameras and we went through all of the sanitary and all of the stormworks to ensure that there was no necessary repairs prior to that. Unfortunately, we don't have the ability to do that with water, but at this point, we feel the infrastructure is in good enough condition that it wasn't necessary to start doing spot digs, so to speak, prior.
Yeah. Are there any lead lines down there still? Lead water lines?
I can't say no a hundred percent. I'd like to think that the majority of them have been changed out over the years, but it seems like every time we think we've got them all, another small piece seems to crop.
The records show there's no more lead left, but the digs show something different.
Okay, I was just, the only reason I was asked, because we've spent a couple hundred grand on paving it, and then we dig it up a day... grand on paving it, and then we dig it up a day later.
Absolutely. And, you know, I'm not going to say that that can't happen in the world of maintenance, even if everything is in good shape. That is a possibility. However, we do everything that we can prior to these projects to ensure that that isn't the case. And like I say, ultimately, the big one for us is doing that amount of camera work that we can do prior to construction.
And then, one other thing, I was just wondering how we're making out with the, uh, with the Sani dump, I guess, for the car washes and the shops and everything like that?
Okay. So, as you know, we're in a position right now where we are currently not taking any more car wash sand. There is an alternative for people who haul car wash sand in Dawson Creek, but that alternative is to go to Grand Prairie at this time. Any hauler can set up an account with Grand Prairie, pay $14.57 a cubic meter to dispose of the sand there. As you know, we're working with the regional district right now in hopes of getting a facility soon. At this point, we're obviously waiting on to hear back in regards to the grant. As far as a short-term solution at this point, I'm looking at things, but I don't have anything in concrete right now.
I met with Cam from Legacy last week and had a conversation. He's found an alternative for the time being, and hopefully, when we get our truck waste facility and get that infrastructure improved, that we can then start to be able to accommodate that wastewater, that waste material, and deal with it effectively and appropriately. Counselor McFadden?
Uh, just the equipment you've put out, the Sani dump, to detect, uh...
Hydrocarbons.
What'd you call it?
Hydrocarbons.
Yeah. If it detects something, an alarm goes off and the valve shuts everything off, or how does that?
Absolutely. So, what we've done is we've put in a system where if it detects more than 50 parts per million in regards to the hydrocarbon, a valve will close. At that point, it is also automated, so it will send an alarm to our SCADA system at our water treatment plant to let our staff know, and it'll give us the ability to actually go and clean that station out before it goes into the system.
Yeah.
However, there probably is going to be someone on the other end of that line still hooked up who can't get rid of their load. And we will know exactly who that is, because their fob will have been used to get access to the system at that time. Now, staff will be working with many of the haulers and the companies on the front end who have this product, whether it's testing out in the field prior to us receiving this product, or even working with contractors as they come into, into our dump site to try and ensure this, this goes seamlessly for everybody.
Right.
This isn't a process that we're just, you know, necessarily hoping to nab somebody, so to speak, but what we're trying to ultimately accomplish is the protection of our system.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Jevetkov?
Um, I've got one comment, or, I guess, maybe a question. On the corner of 13th Street and 108th, there's, you guys dispose of the sand there as it accumulates over the winter.
Right.
But it's quite dug up, and there's quite a ridge between the curb and the grass.
Mm-hmm.
So, I just wondered if that's on your radar to repair it, or?
As a general rule, we repair as they're brought forward or through complaint, and usually, the homeowner would be the first person to call and say, "There's been damage done to my yard." I can double-check on that one. At this time, I'm not 100% sure that it's on the list, but I can make sure that gets repaired.
Okay, it's not on the yard. It's actually right along the curb.
Absolutely.
And it's gravel, exposed gravel, and it's, it's kind of a mess, and it's, it will be impossible to maintain the way it is.
Yeah, and, and fair enough. And we do get those, and like I say, usually, the homeowner jumps right forward right away and says, you know, "There's damage on the boulevard," because it's adjacent to their home or such. But I'll double-check on that one, because we do go back, we do read landscape, we reseed, we do whatever it takes to fix it.
Um, a question on 104th. Is it still policy that you ensure that there's services to vacant lots before you repave?
We, we definitely do that.
Okay, so if there's vacant lots along 104th, they would be?
We check servicing, make sure they're serviced prior to doing that. We don't want to dig them up after the fact.
Yeah. Um, the other question, I'm not sure. I, I read it in here, and I've been looking for it in your report and Kevin's report. It's to do with the condition of the paving, the assessment?
Okay.
For, for paving condition?
Yeah.
Is that yours?
Um, it's, it was done through Kevin. However, we just received the results for, for the tender on Friday, and I believe, Kevin, you're going through that at this time?
So, is that a follow-up to the old, original? So, it's just an update?
Just an update.
Okay. So, ahead.
Thank you. Counselor Wilber?
Um, I just, I've been getting lots of calls about 96. I'm just wondering, is that up to us to pave where that line was fixed, or is that up to the homeowner, or?
It is up to us, and, uh, were you over it this morning?
No.
Oh, okay, because it was supposed to have been done on the weekend.
Okay. I hadn't, I've not gone to work.
We've, we've got our, our new paving contractor all set up, and they were patching for us on the weekend. I haven't been up there to check.
Okay.
But that was one of the first ones that were on, on the list, is their priority, as well as 13th Street here out on Alaska. So, we'll follow up today to ensure that...
I'll go, I'll go to work that way, and then I'll call you.
Great.
Counselor Jevetkov?
Uh, just one more comment about paving. I, I see Capital Motors has paved their lot, and it looks absolutely awesome. Like I said before, you know, I'd rather look at brand-new paving like that than flowers downtown, so it's just my personal, my personal preference.
You don't mind if you talk us into?
Well, enjoy that cement, pal. Enjoy your hours.
Thank you. Anything further for Sean?
So, I just want to say how much the streets really do look good in the city in terms of having the winter stuff gone, and I've had some comments about that from the community about how, how really good the city streets do. So, we want to pass that on to you and the staff.
Well, thank you very much. And because we're not even out the end of May, and we're already at this point, we're really happy with where we're at for the season.
Looks really good. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Counselor McFadden, did you have a question?
Well, I just, I, I think it's twice that I've agreed with Counselor Jevetkov. I wanted to make that statement. It doesn't happen that often, and when it does, I think I should, he should know that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We got a love-in going.
I thought you were saying we were bringing donuts.
Counselor, a report from Director of Community Services. Good morning, Mr. Rayner. Welcome. Good to see you.
Good morning.
Thanks for coming.
I was worrying about the council agreeing. I wanted to clarify, was that about the pavement comment?
He likes pavement, too. He used to, what did he used to say to me all the time?
Log it, mine it, pave it.
He used to talk to me and say that to me, just to, just to see me go fine.
Well, we'll open up with our community services. There's, there's a number of items in there. It's, it's again a busy season for finishing up things in the arena, and that was the Kiwanis Trade Show, and then flipping over into getting the beautification up and rolling. And as Sean is getting the streets and that ready, we're, we're getting the green spaces and the planters ready. So, there's lots of work going on there, and David's doing a great job. I, it's also a time when David gets out there and does his tree assessment, and I want to let you know that he's doing a great job with that as well. I think in some areas, when you stretch an arborist and you stretch a horticulturist, then he's without Darcy, I think he's doing a great job. So, we continue to work with him, and an example of that, we, we worked with our community people. Counselor Shaley can remember our meetings up on 90th, and anytime you put an orange ring around a tree on 90th, you're, you're going to get some attention. So, we had a call...
It did help that Barry told the residents I showed up with my chainsaw.
Yeah, that was sort of like the concrete conversation. So, we met with the homeowner, and David did a great job in that. And, and when you look at how those assessments are completed, and every individual tree that he does in those assessments are on record, and that, after meeting with the homeowner, the only thing that we would probably have done a little differently was, was notify the homeowner before painting the tree orange. He actually thought it was vandalism to start with, but we'll, we'll continue to work. And Counselor Shaley, you'll also note that we have one on Donna's, right on Donna's property, and she's in full agreement of it coming down as well. So, David's doing a great job with that. So, if you hear of any of those orange markers out there, please give us a call. Certainly, we have an aging species on our city properties. This homeowner was quite interested to know that almost half of his front yard is city property, so these will be coming down, and we'll also be looking at a tree replacement up on 90th as well. Lots of things happening. There's lots of notes in there that if you have anything directly, I wanted to specifically talk a little bit about WorkSafe and how that went. It's one of our concerns. The day of mourning is a great highlight that staff and counselors get involved in. Appreciate your, your work with that. Don't want to go without mentioning a number of statistics and the, the great community cleanup that happened, and our, you see the number of stats of groups that were involved, the areas that were covered, the people that actually contribute, and I always like to try and highlight those. And Dawson Creek Kinsman Club for sponsoring the barbecue, Jillian and Kyle MacLeod from Alaska Avenue, Tim Hortons for the generous donation, t-shirts and gloves, DC Recycling and Boto Depot for donating space at the depot and additional roll-off waste bin, and Chandler Constructions and Celtic Homes for sponsoring Five Teams and Reg Norman providing some additional trucks for pickup. The only hiccup we had throughout that whole process, and, and I think, was the inclement weather we had for seniors pickup, and the Rotarians found a way to pick that up two, or a week later, and, and found their way there. But if you heard any concerns or issues, we certainly will be going back and ensuring, ensuring secure loads are, and working with them to ensure that those weren't our city staff out there, but volunteers trying to do the best that they could, and we'll work with them if there's any council concerns there as well. Probably the biggest note to, to talk about, or before we get there, is respect in the workplace. We are now up to 134 staff have completed the project, and I think we're getting some great results out of discussions around that. Um, probably the biggest one that council's interested in is the RFP closed on Friday. We had two tenders. Jim gave an update to the council on that. Duncan will be flying out this afternoon to meet with both those groups. It's a very critical part of the closure of this report, coming back to council. I believe, Jim, we're, we're hoping to have it at the end of the week.
We're hoping to have a special meeting Friday afternoon, folks are available.
Duncan will have the report ready for Jim's approval late, late Wednesday after meeting with both groups. In regards to the specifics around there, I think we're very encouraged, and Jim had outlined that with both costs and timeframe for that as well. Part of that, I highlighted as well, is that we did the, the extra meetings with the user groups to, to work through the council decision of, of the worst-case scenario, specifically to our higher-end athletes, our high-performance athletes, some of the figure skaters, our junior B team wanting to get started. We've been working with other communities around ice allocation and usage in their communities before we can get up and running. But I think once the report gets finalized, we probably can shorten some of those timeframes, and we'll go back. And I think there's a constant communication with our groups, which they appreciate it. So, I'm very happy with that. And I'm not sure if, Jim, you, you, was there any other comments regarding the RFP that we want to talk about?
Uh, so, Barry won't be here on Friday. You're going to have to rely on Duncan.
That's probably good. Uh, this is, this is Duncan's expertise, and so, bringing this back out through, I feel very confident that he can bring that forward. Any questions specifically?
Counselor Wilber, then Counselor Jevetkov?
Just around trees. So, interesting enough, I, at the program I was at this weekend, I had a lady that lives in the Kitchen Park area, so we're removing some trees there. So, are we also planning on replacing the trees or taking down in that park?
I'll, I'll come back with maybe what my next Cal report. I'll, I'll bring out a report on David's sort of plan. We're, we're trying to pull that all together. As, as most know, most of our parks are, in the last five years, have started to see
Yeah.
a lot of depletion of the poplar trees. So, Kitchen, Ken, 90th are probably the three areas.
Yeah. So, she didn't have a problem with them coming down. She understood why. She was just...
Yeah, we're starting to look at replacement.
Thought they were, benefited the park a lot if they'd be replaced. So, I appreciate that.
We'll see what's cheaper trees or pavement.
That's right.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I'm a rose between two cleaving thorns.
So, heard Jevetkov?
What'd I do?
What? I didn't, I didn't say anything.
What'd I do?
Counselor Jevetkov?
Um, I was just wondering, how many people showed up for the mandatory viewing for the arenas? Was it just the two?
There were two, no, three. We had three show up.
But you only got two bids?
Two bids, yeah.
Was there any locals?
Uh, no, but local contractors were part of that process together, yes. I think there were a total of, I think there were 10 total, so the rest were subcontractors.
Yeah. You mentioned in your report that you've hired a power engineer, but in the report about converting from ammonia to Freon, there's a comment that you don't require a power engineer.
That, that's correct to some degree. The, the term of the chief power engineer is currently the, the, I guess, that would be the status or the name of the supervisor of the union level at that, that oversees the plants, oversees the staff. So, there's a combination of a number of things. So, as that decreases, we will probably be able to stretch that efficiency of what that engineer does. Do we see some efficiencies there? Sure we do. But that individual is a key individual for all of the maintenance in the building, all the maintenance, and both will, there'll be some additional in the curling rink as well now. But it's, it's a supervisory union role within, in the arenas to manage or supervise five to seven staff. So, the, the terminology is a little more, it was always classified.
The title might change over time?
Yeah, the title, the title meant is it is a chief power engineer.
So, will it change in terms like, my understanding is we had to have somebody on staff there 24 hours a day with ammonia?
They were on call 24/7.
On call?
Yeah. We always had to have a chief power engineer on call. So, on weekend coverage, those, they rotated through. Those that were certified carried the phone.
Okay. Um, the other thing that I, I noticed the other day, there's a water trailer out here?
Correct.
And I don't know the history on it. Could you just kind of give me a brief update on where that came from or what the purpose is?
I could bring a full report back through, but my memory, and probably a couple of counselors could assist me with this. It was brought through as a water fill station purchase approved through council to utilize in community events to promote the use of water, highlight water usages within the community. And the trailer, the original purchase of the water fill station and, and additional partnerships were worked throughout the community for the trailer.
I think it was meant to, also to discourage the use of bottled water at public events, wasn't it?
Public events.
It's like refill.
Yeah. I'm talking the plastic ones you buy at the store, I think.
Counselor Wilber?
I, I was going to say, it's been well utilized. It's used at all the soccer games. I know we've had local businesses come on and purchase water bottles and give them out. So, it's used at different community events by different groups. It's been taken out to Tumbler Ridge, Chatwin. So, it's well utilized, and the encouragement is, is you bring your water bottle, and it's there to fill up while you're at the event, and you don't have to keep going and purchasing.
So, is that all, is the cost borne by the city?
There were a number of partnerships, and again, I could pull that file for you and provide that information for you.
Thank you. Anything further for Barry? Thanks, Barry. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, Kevin?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Director of Development Services, sorry, I should have said.
I'll touch on a few things in the report. Start with building permits. So, in April, things did increase a little bit, but we still are behind what we saw in 2014. But based on speaking with the building inspectors and everybody in the department, it sounds like that is, is picking up again here in, in the month of May, so we might see some changes next Cal. So, right now, 2015, end of April, we're right, just over $5 million for the building permits, down from 2014 at 21 million. Again, 2014 was a bit of an influx there earlier in the year, so those numbers are a little bit skewed, I think, but we'll see how that plays out. Some new stats that we included this, and we will carry on moving forward, is SBCA stats, which I think is kind of interesting to see what's going on down there. And so, what we do see here is that we do have one chicken license. And actually, a number of cat licenses, which was surprising to me as well, so...
There'll be.
So, yeah, again, good information. Just see what's happening and just how busy they are down there, what's coming and going, so... I'll just touch on a few of the operational strategies, one being what Counselor Jevetkov brought up was the road condition assessment. We had put out an RFP, a call for RFPs earlier in the month. That closed on Friday. We had a number of responses, so we'll go through that and determine. But that will build on the one that we did in 2003 and provide us a, a snapshot of where we are today, and will help guide us with capital improvements moving forward. Just another piece of the puzzle of that tangible capital. puzzle of that tangible capital asset work that we're doing. Sewer DCCs, last meeting council considered the bylaw, we're now preparing for a bit of a stakeholders' meeting, we're inviting builders, developers, we're advertising, we're gonna have that this Friday afternoon and just have a bit of an open house type thing to go through that. So hopefully that'll go well, we'll get some people out, go through that. And automated waste collection programs, I've been working with waste management on some materials and next council meeting, I hope to bring forward a report that will be a bit of an update on where we're at and what's going on. We also have a bylaw that we need to make some amendments to because the old bylaw refers everything pretty much back, speaking about bags and whatnot, so we need to look at that as well. So that'll be coming forward. Last piece was in my news notes regarding the road safety or traffic safety review. We had reached out to ICBC just to talk about what that might look like, specifically the corridor of Eighth and Alaska, and maybe there's some partnerships there, and really was just trying to get a sense of what, you know, the scope would look like and what a potential budget might look like if we wanted to look into the future. So yeah, what we heard from ICBC was that to do a project of that size is probably in that $75,000 to $90,000 range. Of course, there might be potential for some partnering there between the city MOT and even ICBC said that they might be willing to partner, but those discussions would have to be had. And then if we wanted to look at any specific intersections throughout the city, you know, it'd be another $25,000 and those, that of course would be the city and possibly our ICBC partnership as well, but again, those would have to be explored, so I just wanted to bring that up because I know there was some discussion earlier about what that might look like. So, any questions?
While I have that, I want to talk about that because I'd asked when I met, I was down in Vancouver about three or four weeks ago and met with the folks from ICBC and talked about the whole aspect of trying to engage them and partnership with the highways to look at a potential road safety audit. And an audit like that is really the lens of safety on the design for how traffic, pedestrians, everyone intersects and deals with the overall planning for the road safety component of the engineering and how those vehicles and pedestrians move effectively. And the only way I can really explain it is the lens of an engineer, an engineer safety planner brings to it, brings those traffic calming techniques to the plan and things like landscaping, things like traffic circles, things like, say, traffic control devices. And it's a specific skill, it's a specific knowledge that these folks have when they do it, and so what it would be to me is to be able to bring the whole aspect of how do we, how do we ensure that, and it's not our accountability, right, Alaska Avenue and Eighth Street, it's the Ministry of Transportation, but those are our residents, and I think that, you know, that tragedy that we've had and we heard it from the RCMP today about we got more and more traffic, especially to me Eighth Street, we've got more and more traffic going across the, up and down that roadway as we have more and more pedestrians. And we had so many zones in there, so many instances where people are trying to get across Eighth Street at McDonald's, at A&amp;W, at the mall, at the 7-Eleven, at the different, and so to me, if we could find a way that we could try to bring some ideas and concepts working together with the highways to make it safer for people and both for vehicle drivers as well as the pedestrians. And so I asked them if they could get back to us with some concept and give Kevin some idea of that and then if council have the will to consider this, that we ask administration to find the 30 grand, let's partner with ICBC and the Ministry of Highways to come up with some techniques in terms of what we can do to try to make it a safer zone for our community and our residents. So that's why I've asked it to be brought forward today and I, and I want to make that by way of a motion that we do engage, what's that?
Not in committee.
Oh, not in committee of the whole, I can't do that, can I?
No.
Damn. Okay, the next meeting.
Nice try.
Anyway, anyway, I just think it's got some real value to us to consider, so.
Thank you, Kevin.
You can do that after close.
Yeah, go ahead Charlie, Counselor Parsel.
Further to what you said, should we not maintain that motion, will we return it to open?
Yeah.
The second comment I would make is, would you add, the way you talked about vehicles, would you also consider adding bicycles?
Well, the whole road safety audit would do exactly that. Counselor Parsel, it would be bicycles, it would be pedestrians, it would be vehicles, it would be every mode of transportation that impacts that corridor. And I think to me, it gives us the opportunity to give some techniques, some concepts that we can then work with the Ministry of Transportation to try to implement some ways to make it safer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions for Kevin's report? Counselor Wilbur?
I actually don't have a question, but I see that Wendy's here from the SPCA, but I'm just happy to see how many in the community actually brought and registered their cast, but also the fact that the SPCA now has the ability to deal with some of the issues we've had around town and people have suffered property damage, so it's nice to see that that's gone through and that action's being taken and we can look after this problem that was gaining ground on us.
Thank you. Counselor Rogers, Counselor Jevakov.
I see you met with a bunch of developers and attempted to expedite any problems that they're having. How'd that go?
Sorry, with which ones?
On monthly activities, the very last one.
Oh yeah, so Engineering Department has met with a couple developers regarding some subdivisions that are not complete as of yet and working through deficiencies and it's been honestly a slow process.
Okay. One of the other things that I had noticed is like when we were, we get developers coming in and they're asking us for amendments or variances to our zoning and our bylaws and it's always, oh, we're in such a big hurry, you know, this can't wait, this can't wait, this can't wait, and I'm looking at all of the permits and I'm going, you know, every one of those guys that came in here and said, it's a big hurry, it's a big hurry, you guys have to make a decision right away, putting pressure on us to make a decision, and I look at the building permits and they haven't even pulled one yet. So I guess maybe it's because I'm new or something like that, that I thought that these guys were serious, but now I just look at it and I go, bullshit. Anyways, surprise, I guess. Garbage cans.
Yes.
Where we have the garbage?
With the automated waste?
Yeah.
I'll be bringing a report next meeting, that was the one I spoke to. But we, we've, going through the process of the supplier of the cans, we've got that narrowed down with waste management and developing some educational materials that will be going out to homeowners. Essentially, we'll be targeting probably, I believe it's first of September, I think is the transition is when we look at be happening. We have to wait for some equipment, waste management has to get their truck, things have to fall into place. That also gives us the lead time to get the information out to the publics.
There's only a couple of the things that I had with the garbage cans is, I know that I'm not 100% sure, but we had two sizes, right? There was two sizes that were gonna be available?
That's right, so that's what we were looking at. We've also chatted with waste management and internally about, we have options of either going with different sized cans or potentially going with one size can and people may be getting a second can of that same size. And the only reason that we looked at that is administratively, you'd only have one can to deal with one size, you wouldn't be guessing how many of each size you may need, so that's an option that I can bring forward to council and.
Okay, because the only part that was bugging me a moment was is you've got these, you've got suite duplexes, you've got duplexes and then you've got single-family houses with suites in it, which essentially is a duplex. And then I just look at the garbage pickup for those single-family houses, but actually there's two residences that are in it and how to make sure that, you know, they're paying airway because why is, why would the garbage get subsidized by the people that are actually RS1?
So it'll be, every utility account will be entitled to a container, so with those, Shelley, they would be, there'd be two utility accounts in a home with a suite.
Yeah, through your worship, presently, we have anybody with two families in an RS1 or whatever, they have two separate accounts, you can ask Mr. Raynard. He has his children upstairs and he's downstairs and he has to pay a separate.
Okay.
Supposed to pay happily, but it's not actually that.
Counselor Jevakov?
There was some talk here a while ago about the BC Building Code and the ability for the city to continue requiring preparation for solar panels and those kinds of things in the building permit?
Right.
Is there a change yet to that or where is that at?
So I don't believe the act is enabled as of yet, do you know Jim?
But it's allegedly on the schedule for this city.
So essentially what's going to happen is if and when that is enacted, that anything above and beyond the code will not be able to be enforced.
What's holding it up right now, we understand, is they're looking at special regs around sprinklers. So our working group, we have some professional members on, says that's what's holding things up right now is lack of agreement on that.
Thank you. Anything further?
Kevin, I just want to express neighborhood up in our area, you got the streetlights recently operational, the residents are ecstatic with it, so if you can pass it on to the guys.
A little late, but hey, good, I'm glad.
Not looking for perfection, looking for progress.
That's right, keep it moving on.
Thanks, Kevin.
You bet.
So at this time, we're gonna recess to our closed. Moved by Counselor Wilbur, Secretary of Council.
I need to add an item, reference contractual arrangement in Canada Event Center, it just came up this morning, but I need five minutes.
And to close?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. So we'll take, buddy, we'll call the meeting to order of our policy meeting. Item two is minutes, 2.1, minutes of our policy meeting of May 11th for adoption, Counselor McFadden, Counselor Wilbur, all those in favor? Opposed?
I just want to note that under the date, it actually says 12:00 AM, so we might fix.
We'll fix the date.
I have no problem leaving and going back. I mean, that's what it felt like, didn't it?
Report, item 3-1, we have report number 15092 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding our May 25th policy review. Counselor McFadden, Counselor Jevakov.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Go ahead.
I'll be gonna read it up, but I guess I don't know if you need for.
I just gotta bring mine up, so. So.
Run 3-1.
3-1.
So moved for, received for discussion.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Schuman, Secretary of Counselor Wilbur, we received for discussion. All in favor? Opposed, carried. So we'll go through the first item. We lost.
Page three.
And for me, the whole risk matrix, risk management, is such an important work and I know that we, Shelley's got a risk matrix and identifies this and for me, I think that it's a bit of work that we really, gives you such clarity in terms of those priorities for your community and for your operations and it's more than a financial risk matrix, it's almost an entire organizational risk matrix and that identifies the probability of an event happening, what's the impact to the organization and what's the potential impact to the organization, both in terms of the things that, so I just really like the idea that we review it and we have a look at it and so from that purpose, that's why I put it on as an important topic for us to have a look at. Shelley, do you have any comments about that?
From my perspective as the finance officer, because it falls underneath what I oversee, it's a pretty big, complex piece of work and it's across departments and it's integrated through everything. The first step, I mean, this has been a long time coming, but the first step of actually putting it in the report and having first directors and senior managers just have to fill out that section of the report makes everybody think about risk.
Yeah.
And then when it become, when it comes in front of council, if you have a low-risk item, maybe you won't spend as much time on it as if there was a high-risk intention there. The other thing that happens is if it's higher risk, then there's more explanation, right? Because you, it basically focuses where you, where you need to pay attention. So that was one of the key, key pieces. We still have procedures to put in, but the model itself and the system and the framework, it's based, based on the COSO Cube, so that's been updated too and it's not simple, it's across the whole organization, so big piece of work, it's, I don't think a lot of local governments have it within their organization. So yeah, I think it's critical.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, so we're doing this local auditor general, local government stuff right now that we can't talk about, but in the interviews, we were asked, I was asked about, do we consider risk and happily able to say yes.
Yeah, I just think it's a really important bit of work that sometimes gets, doesn't get the attention in some organizations or groups and so I was, like I say, I was really happy that it exists, I was happy to review it and just thought it was pertinent and worthwhile to bring back as part of our policy review. Anything further? We don't need anything further on that in terms of.
Just to reaffirm.
Reaffirm? Motion to reaffirm, Counselor Schuman, Counselor Jevakov, discussion, Counselor Jevakov?
I was just wondering when, if the policy is just in the process of being implemented, the last date or the first and only date on the, on the risk management policy is January 25th, 2010, so this one was commissioned in 2013? Has that now become the policy or where are we at with that?
I can speak to that, thank you. I think we started the work in, bear with me for a sec. 2013 was when the report from Sigma Risk Board, so after that presentation, the policy was approved and then we've only had one annual report to council on basically what We report out once a year to you, so I assume that in the next couple of years, we will actually be reviewing the risk register with all those things that the mayor just said, the likelihood, has anything significantly changed with the risk register, that kind of thing, so.
So this will come out annually, no?
We have an annual report that comes to council in June.
On risk management?
Yep, yep. That basically just says we've addressed these risks, these are new risks, these are, you know, we need to be aware of them.
Thank you. Further questions, further comments? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Item two, the revenue disclosure requirements that was amended in. Item two, the revenue disclosure requirements that was amended in May of 2012. Counselor Rogers brought this forward in regards to the user fees and charges are due for review every three years. That's all going to end up going back into.
So I think the short answer from staff is it is time for a comprehensive review, but we don't have time for a comprehensive review. That's, there's so much on your plate right now. We're already holding day-long meetings every week, basically, and, and, you know, without abandoning one of the other priorities, it just won't be possible for Shelley's department to get to that this year.
Counselor Rogers?
This can all be moved in with our dealing with the fiscal gap, which is coming up at the end of June, can it not? Isn't this all part of dealing with the fiscal gap?
So what Shelley is reporting is you've made really involved decisions about what your philosophy about recovery of costs is in the rec facilities, but you haven't done that elsewhere. You 100% recover the cost of water and sewer. You have a policy that says in recreation, you're basically targeting recovering 50% of the cost. All other services are somewhere in between with no philosophy that underpins them. So you're, you're going to want to do that work either in conjunction with fiscal gap or as a separate piece aside from fiscal gap, but you're going to want to set similar council direction around what you're looking to recover on everything from a business license to a parking fund.
You know, there's been discussions, and we even had it today, where there's, do we, does that 200, I think the $250 fee we charged for the admin fee, is that admin fee part of our financial fee policy that should we be considering as it relates to the services we provide within the organization? So to me, that's a user fee philosophy, a component of that, that this, I don't think the city has done that detailed work on, right? So it's a consideration as one more aspect to it. Shelley?
Yeah, just to add a comment. So it was surely after that, after I got here that, you know, we seen that fees weren't looked at for a while. But the important thing here is that through the years, the areas of revenue where you are 100% fee-based, that are large amounts of revenue, have been looked at. Your water went through a rate, five-year process of looking at the model for covering operations, covering infrastructure, covering future capital. We just went through the sewer. And there is a rate increase in 2011, there's, pardon me, in 2015, and there's another one in 2017. So we've covered off the big items and then what we need to do is actually look at the low-revenue ones. It's not that they're not important, because they are, but it's a lot of detailed work. The revenue disclosure requirement itself is an attachment to your annual budget bylaw. And it's very broad in scope. It's because the community charter says we have to put this policy into the bylaw. And so in that, it identifies all the revenue sources and it, and it still does say everything is integrated and if you change one thing, that will change something else. So you have to look at it as a, as a whole model. And this, this one comment that Counselor Rogers brought forward is that fees and charges should be looked at, because if you're not keeping pace with the service, something else will have to subsidize it. So, and like Jim says, we, you know, want to change the world every year, but we don't have so much time.
Thank you. So motion?
I'd move that we address it with the fiscal gap stuff.
Okay. Have some discussions within the fiscal gap in regards to fees and charges policy, fees and charges.
Because I can only assume that we're going to be looking at services as well anyways.
Yeah, I just got, I'm just not sure about the level of detail with respect to the fiscal gap discussions, as to whether it'll get us into that kind of a level of detail. I'm not sure, because I don't, I don't know what to think about that. I'm looking to administration for your thoughts on that.
One of the real issues that faces any local government in B.C., any local government in Canada, is that you have, you don't have the same access to revenue streams that senior levels of government do. And that means that you have to make, you have to make decisions in a narrower window. And unfortunately, that means you have to spend a lot of time on things like your user And I just can't see how that won't be a big part of the fiscal gap.
Okay, good. Perfect. All right. Thank you. So we'll move it to fiscal gap. Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Sorry.
Let me do the second.
Oh, yeah, that was Counselor Wilbur.
Thank you.
Sorry. Item three, we have extension of services for property outside the boundaries. This was a policy that was reaffirmed in November of 2009. To me, it was six years old and is it something we should just get an update on or a review of to ensure that it's still appropriate for 2015 and beyond? Are there folks still? Counselor Jevetkov?
Yeah, I think it's still relevant. I mean, it's, you know, we don't want to provide services outside of the city unless we're going to incorporate the area into the city. Now, we have made a couple of variances with sewer, but sewer is a kind of a unique thing. It's not like water service. You know, you have to get rid of your sewer properly. So, you know, those things are still available to us, but as far as the policy, I think it's.
Jim?
The underpinning of your policy is the access to those services, which is, if you're an unincorporated area, like Charlie Lake, often the very reason you incorporate is to get those services. That's a, it's a underpinning of local government. There's nobody who would say that isn't your core service. So you've taken the position that it's a privilege to have water and sewer and you ought to be contributing tax money for things like policemen and arenas and parks, road maintenance, if you're going to get that water and sewer. So you've taken that and you're trying to avoid unlevel playing fields where, where someone has water and sewer, but they are not contributing to those other things and so they have a competitive advantage over a property owner within your boundaries. Now, your policy says they're either in the boundaries or willing to come in, because we have had situations where we wanted the property to come in, the property owner wanted the property to come in, the regional district and the agricultural land commission both signed off on that and the province still turned us down. And in those cases, you've gone ahead with the water connections because, you know, there was no, that was the intent of the owner. You started that process and about three years later, the ministry turned down the boundary expansion. So, you know, you, those folks have water. And there are these couple of places where for public health reasons, you've allowed the sewage to come in in a partnership with the regional district. But the policies work pretty well generally. You have one historic situation that the mayor and I have been dealing with that may come to council, but in the meantime, I don't think it'd be wise for us to bring it up in the open meeting unless it does come to councils.
Counselor Rogers?
Should we have somewhere in that policy that says that the owner will provide a feasibility Because we've had troubles within the past without, you know, if it's, if it's, if we're bringing property in, there should automatically be a feasibility study that goes with that property as it comes in.
Well, that's what we've been doing and council supported that, but it is available to council to make a different decision at some point in time, to say that you didn't require that, that study.
And if, yeah, and I think to me, the piece about it, you want to make sure that if it comes in, that it can be serviced and the feasibility of doing that, but at the same time, you don't want to lock it to a policy either that in the event that you got something there that you want to bring in, that you say it's crazy in order, and just because we have the policy to make them do it, so. My own. Counselor Schuman?
So motion to reaffirm?
Just to reaffirm, yeah. Counselor Schuman, Counselor McFadden. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Next one, item four was the local area service policy, was approved in January. The only thing I looked at, we did, and put so much work into our master transportation plan as it related to the planning of the future development of the city for the whole aspect of the transportation, both our roads and bikes and sidewalks and all of that. And I just wanted to make sure that it, we're comfortable to say that that local area service policy still is reflective of the future of how we see the development of the community as it relates to the master's transportation planning process and the funding that goes with that. And so that's my only purpose in wanting it to be brought back, just for us to just have that conversation. Counselor Jevetkov?
And I, I think I brought it up because there's two policies there that seem to conflict. The local area service exempt roads, which has a map that I think is current. And then the major thoroughfare designation for paving purposes, which has a map that, that isn't current. It's missing some of the roads that, that we pave ourselves. So I thought if they could be amalgamated.
The, actually, the second one, the major thoroughfare designation for paving purposes was supposed to have been rescinded when you put in the new local area service policy and it never did. So now it will.
But I do have some comments on the, you know, I don't know if this system that we have for having landowners pay for part of the paving, I don't know how long it's going to last. Like, I'm just concerned about roads that are deteriorating and we can't get approval to repave them. So what do we do? Just let them go back to, you know?
Yeah, and I guess that was part of my, my point about wanting to bring it back, because at some point, if exactly that happens, how do we handle it? Because we got a policy and you can't, you can't say to one area, okay, we're paving your street and you charge them for it, and then the next year, you got a street that deteriorated so badly that it needs to be, but the residents turn it down. I guess it just creates a, I think for us to, to me, to, we should be having that understanding of the policy as it relates to the future. Counselor Schuman?
So, but we changed that. Like, what are we on, four or five?
Well, so we're, they're both kind of linked.
Okay. So speaking to five, like, we changed it so that there, I mean, we tried to pave between 15th and 17th, 94th Avenue, the bill was going to be like a million bucks or something. Of course, all the residents said, no way. So we changed our policy so that we would do the majority of the work and they just had to pay for the asphalt overlay, like, so, I mean, and we did that specifically to, because of what you guys are saying, all the streets getting turned, you know, every time we go to the residents, they say no, because the bill's too big. So we changed it. Didn't we change it?
20%? 80%?
Through your worship, the council looked at this and said, exactly as Counselor Jevetkov was saying, how sustainable is this policy into the future?
Going forward.
And the interim transitional step council took was to downgrade significantly the amount the residents paid for. In dollar terms, it's still fair compared to what people paid in the past, it's just that the cost of that work has got so extraordinarily high. And so you did, you dropped down the amount that would be the responsibility of the property owner. And you've had one successful year of that. This is the second year of that and we'll see whether the residents vote for that or not. But when you made that transitional step, I agree that you're transitioning towards a future where probably there won't be local area services and major thoroughfares, there will be city roads, and you will have a policy for that that doesn't involve the vote of the individual neighborhood. The transportation master plan talked about connectivity and how it's different than in the past. In the past, traffic tended to be on certain corridors and very little in the rest, and it tended to be vehicular traffic only. It's transitioning over time to more pedestrian traffic and more connectivity. And over time, you're going to end up with taking the responsibility as a community for the roadways rather than leaving it to neighborhoods. I think that's where it's going to go.
And our, and the master transportation plan having some core, and I think about 13th Street potentially as a major connectivity to the north-south, may turn that into a designated route that we may need to. So that's all I was thinking about was there's, with the master transportation plan, does our policy within the local area service policy, is it still appropriate to guide us for the future is all. Counselor Rogers?
Yeah, we'll, I guess we'll find out, because we voted on 8.3 today, which that was 104th between 8th and 13th. So we're borrowing 266,000 homeowners, they're going to end up paying 300, or 340 bucks a year distributed amongst 87 properties. So that worked in with this formula that we have here, 20 and 80?
Okay.
Yeah, or they're not, because you set the rates today, so now it goes out for their vote.
So if, if we, if we end up changing the rates, I don't want to say.
Well, suppose that project is not supported by the residents. You're, you're going to then have additional decisions to make? That's simple, is that?
As a part of our capital program.
And what'll end up happening is if, if the residences say that they're, they don't want it paved, and then the city turns around and paves it anyways, that'll set a precedent for the rest of the neighborhoods in town.
That's correct. So your transition would happen quicker if that happened. Or you could say, well, in that case, we're not doing it and, and it deteriorates over time.
So is there any, Counselor Jevetkov?
So is there any option to say, we're doing it and you're going to pay?
Well, actually, no. The, you talk about your revenue tools, that's one not yet available to us, although Vancouver has it in their charter, Surrey is now asking for it in their charter, UBCM is talking about it, where you could establish zones in your community and, and build the property owners within a zone for the work rather than all of the property owners. You don't have that tool yet.
So is there, so all we need now, then I guess, is we're just going to reaffirm what we have and move it forward to see what the impacts are for the next year or two?
I'll reaffirm.
Move, Counselor Wilbur, Secretary of Justice, Schuman. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. And that's both four and five, I'm assuming.
Mm-hmm.
Item six is the raw and processed water hookup, was reaffirmed in November 2009. Counselor McFadden?
I think it just needs to be reaffirmed if nothing has changed that I'm aware of.
Yeah, the only source, the only thing I was thinking about when I looked at this was the aspect of doing some potential changes from, if we do, from the heart reservoir into the trail reservoirs. Does that change anything with respect to any raw water hookups that exist within that area? If we change that, is there something that may potentially impact the raw water hookups that we should be considering and looking at? So that was my only purpose for bringing it. Counselor Jevetkov?
And I was just curious if they are paying for the water that they use? Is it metered or?
Yes, it is metered. They pay a one-time connection charge. They pay for the work, of course, for the line itself connected. They pay a permit fee for that. They pay to get the agreement registered on title, which we require because this water is not potable water. It's raw water and it can only be used under the agreement for sock watering and that kind of thing. And it's also intermittent. So we don't, there isn't water in the raw water line all the time. In fact, during spring for shep, there can be long periods of time when there's no water in it. So all of that is captured in a, an agreement and a covenant and that's registered to land title. The, what we're talking about with. The, what we're talking about with twinning, say, our connections between the reservoirs, really, it's gonna be in the same footprint. It's not gonna open up more, more properties that could potentially access raw water. That'd be completely different if we make a decision to take a water line to another source. Yes, that would open up all sorts of opportunities to be on the line.
Good. Counselor Jevetkov?
So what's the rate for raw water? As opposed to $1.69 per process? And how long do the meters last?
Well, actually, we haven't seen any real major issues with the water. We don't go through a lot of water on the raw water line. Last year, we sold 9,550 cubic feet, so about $12,000.
Thank you. So we just, no anticipated changes, so we'll reaffirm. Let's move Counselor McFadden, seconded Counselor Jevetkov. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Item seven, sewer discharge station was approved in April or July of 2014. Counselor Jevetkov's moving to include the requirement to install a monitoring system to detect contaminants.
Which is what we're doing, so it should find its way into the, into the policy.
So we're putting monitoring stations, alarm systems into the system to detect that throughout the city. So made that my wave of motion. Do we need to, is a motion?
Yes, I think you should have a policy that says...
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Jevetkov, seconded by Counselor Wilbur. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Is that that? Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Motion to adjourn the policy meeting. Counselor Wilbur, seconded Counselor McFadden. All in favor or opposed? It's carried.
So, your worship, on...